Everyone.
Thanks.
Thanks, Mike.
You take care. Have a good holiday.
You too.
All set till seven o'clock, correct?
Correct.
Yep.
The attendees.
It's seven minutes. Hurry back. So the report. There.
Yeah.
One vote were taken.
Yeah, there was.
For the review. Do I have one? I don't. So. Yeah. What's that? I'll just. It's just been a long. Long process. Just. Just. Time here.
Yeah. Time to warm up the coffee.
Because I'm. A bunch of things. They will talk and then when you listen to it.
If it starts to get out of whack. The repression. Every set.
It happens.
And it's got the potential to happen.
Yeah.
Where. Right? I think they're not Jen. That's a tender little good.
Yeah. Those are.
Yeah.
Those are just automatically on the consent.
Yeah.
We had no further liquor lines. So all you have to do is go in and sit these. For the commissioners and make a motion to close to a judge.
Hello, all of me. We got.
You're closing the. Closing against the board of licensed commissioners. You're adjournings the board of licensed commissioners.
But was it?
It was continued.
What was it at public hearing?
No, it's just that. But because we continue it.
Right, so no further.
Right.
Right.
Just don't not make any.
Yeah, it tended. It tended to get a little. But.
If you did.
Not the best.
Pass me.
Yeah, that one got.
Yeah, take me one.
Problem.
Are we got those that are irritating until seven? So many. Yeah, update of applications. Yeah. Right, but I meant for when they call in. Oh. Uh, yeah, I can roll down the say it's called.
Well, because we're gonna let. We're gonna give them a few minutes. A few minutes. Make a sound for your presentation.
Stop that.
It's almost late. I felt so.
Yeah. Somebody. Yeah, I see Jenny, but I didn't actually. Her whole name. Probably her. Right, yeah. Thirty nine seconds.
Superman. Your own book. I just. I jump behind. There are.
Well.
There's, there's still.
That would be very weird.
Yeah.
Whether it works or not. Score. I'm curious. One. Does anybody ever have a change on us? Yeah.
Two, seven o'clock. Are we good? We got. Sorry, good question?
We're ready.
Can someone answer that for me? This Roberts, we good? Okay. We all. We got a. We got everybody? We've got everybody. It's. I see him. Dr. I just, my strength pulls. I can't see anybody. Okay. All right, let's get moving. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our November twenty third Portman Town Council meeting. We'll get started with a. Bledge of allegiance and a moment of silence for our men serving in Congress. The pledge of allegiance to the United States of America. And to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, just as. Thank you all. Hey. I just want to cover a couple of ground rules before we get started. Most of you that are online and viewing us through the Zoom meeting. Are aware how to raise your hand in order to be called upon. For those of you that are calling in on your phone. Star nine will indicate that you have a question. When called upon, star six will allow you to mute and unmute your phone. I do ask that as a reminder, anyone calling in on a phone or through the. Through the Zoom process, please state your name and address to the town clerk. Also, for counselors, just to state your name to prior to the discussion, because at times when we're going back through the tape, it's hard to understand who's, who's talking. We do have a full agenda tonight. I anticipate there will be a lot of call-ins and questions, so I just want to make sure that we're able to identify folks that are calling in. So that. Let's get started with our local.
Ms. Ujufuza.
Here.
Ms. Abbott.
Here.
Mr. Hamilton.
Here.
Mr. Katzman.
Yeah.
Mr. Kelly.
Yeah.
Dr. Ryan.
Here.
Mr. Right here.
Here. Okay. President's executive summary prior to tonight's council meeting. We did have an executive session. Under general laws, forty two, forty six, five, eight, two, potential litigation. There were two items. One item, there was a vote taken seven to zero. Second item, no votes were taken. With that, we will move on to our consent agenda.
Keith Hamilton, motion to receive and as presented. Mark Ryan seconded.
Have a motion and second, all those in favor?
Ms. Ujufuza.
Hi.
Ms. Abbott.
Hi.
Mr. Hamilton.
Hi.
Katzman.
Hi.
Kelly.
Hi.
Dr. Ryan.
Hi.
Mr. Aguirre.
Hi. Motion passes seven to zero.
To adjourn as the Board of Licensed Commissioners. Seconded.
All those in favor?
Ms. Ujufuza.
Hi.
Ms. Abbott.
Hi.
Mr. Hamilton. Mr. Katzman.
Hi.
Kelly.
Hi.
Dr. Ryan.
Hi.
Mr. Aguirre.
Hi. Motion passes seven to zero. Next, we have minutes from our September sixteenth meeting as well as our. November ninth meeting.
Mark Ryan moved to approve as presented. Keith Hamilton second.
All those in favor?
Ms. Ujufuza.
Hi.
Ms. Abbott.
Hi.
Mr. Hamilton.
Hi.
Katzman.
Hi.
Kelly.
Hi.
Dr. Ryan.
Hi.
Mr. Aguirre.
Hi. Motion passes seven to zero. On to our town administration report.
Good evening, this is President of Town Council, ladies and gentlemen. With respect to COVID nineteen update, I hope everybody listening is doing well and staying safe. As you can imagine, Rhode Island's healthcare system is experiencing a record number of hospitalizations due to the rising number of COVID cases. This is putting extreme stress on the healthcare system and healthcare workers. It is important that we make changes to our daily activities and routines. Residents should limit the number of, the amount of people that they are in contact with and the number of places that they're going to on a daily basis. And we should all plan for small Thanksgiving gatherings limited to our households. With the rise in cases, the state of Rhode Island has announced a two-week pause with new closures and restrictions. Some are immediate and others will begin November thirtieth. Effective immediately, social gatherings, gatherings are limited to those within your household. A stay-at-home advisory continues to exist and that exists from ten PM to five AM Sunday through Thursday, ten thirty PM to five AM on Friday and Saturday night. The following changes are in place from November thirtieth to December thirteenth. What? Following will remain open. Pre-kindergarten through eighth grade school, childcare, manufacturing and construction, personal services and healthcare.
I said over there somewhere?
The following will be limited. In-person high school, social gatherings limited to those living in your household. Indoor dining is now thirty, will be thirty-three percent capacity, early closures and one household per table. Retail operations are one person for one hundred square feet, with the exception of big box stores. Big box stores will be limited to one person for one hundred and fifty square feet. And houses of worship are limited to twenty-five percent capacity to a maximum of one hundred and twenty-five people. And the following will be closed. In-person colleges and universities, offices when possible, bar areas, recreation venues and indoor sports facilities, gym and group fitness organizations and organized sports, excluding NCAA and professional sports. These restrictions present additional barriers and a pretty big burden for small businesses during a time when they are already struggling. So I strongly urge everyone to shop local this year. They really need our support. With regard to the Take It Outside Grant Program, a summary of proposals for grants under the state's Take It Outside Initiative has been collected and submitted by our Director of Business Development to the appropriate point of contact at Commerce RI. The Finance Department is working on the town vendor forms required for payment from Commerce, Commerce RI and will establish a special fund to manage any grants received. With respect to the fireboat, I'm happy to report that the new fireboat is now in full operation. A cadre of firefighters have been trained in proper operation, handling and navigation of the vessel. And we can now train additional operators in-house while boat is in service. Related to the operation of the boat, the renovation of the Sandpoint Dock at Prudence Island is underway and we hope to have that project completed by the end of the year. Of note to the council and the school committee, the proposed date for the joint legislative priorities meeting has been changed from January eleventh to January twenty-fifth, so the second town council meeting in January. This will give the council and the school committee more time to bash and consolidate their inputs. Our legislative team has been notified and most have required that they will be in attendance. On January eighth and ninth, the Hassan Field Institute for Public Leadership at Bryant University, the Rhode Island League of Cities and Towns and the Rhode Island Association of School Committees will co-host the twenty twenty-one newly elected leaders orientation. Since that announcement, the invitation has been extended to all city counselors and school committee members. The first day of the training emphasizes roles and responsibilities, ethics, fiduciary responsibilities and the Open Meetings Act. And then day two will concentrate on leadership during a crisis. I forwarded the invitation to the town council and the school committee and will ensure that the person appointed to the school committee tonight will also receive an invitation. And then additionally. I received word late Friday that the Government Finance Officers Association of the United States and Canada has awarded the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting to the town of Portsmouth for its comprehensive annual financial report for the fiscal year that ended June thirtieth, two thousand and nineteen. The certificate of achievement is the highest form of recognition in the area of governmental accounting and finance reporting. And its attainment represents a significant accomplishment and achievement by government and its management. So hats off to Finance Department, the tax official and everybody else who was instrumental in putting that report together last year. That concludes my report as president.
Thank you, Mr. Rain. Okay. Onto resignations and appointments. First item is the Melville Park Committee. I'm in for Tom Freeman.
To approve Mr. Freeman to the Melville Park Committee. Seconded, Mark Ryan.
All those in favor?
Ms. Ujufuza.
Hi.
Ms. Abbott.
Hi.
Mr. Hamilton.
Hi.
Katzman.
Hi.
Mr. Kelly.
Hi.
Dr. Ryan.
Hi.
Mr. Aguirre.
Hi. Motion passes seven to zero. Next, we have appointments to the Economic Development Committee. We have an application for Mr. Tim Brissette.
Motion to appoint Mr. Tim Brissette. This is Linda Ujufuza.
Mark Ryan seconded.
All those in favor?
Ms. Ujufuza.
Hi.
Ms. Abbott.
Hi.
Mr. Hamilton.
Hi.
Mr. Katzman.
Hi.
Mr. Kelly.
Hi.
Dr. Ryan.
Hi.
Mr. Aguirre.
Hi. Motion passes seven to zero. And we have our Wastewater Fields Board as a reappointment. Phil Driscoll.
Mark Ryan, I've moved to reappoint Mr. Phil Driscoll to the Wastewater Board of Appeal. Keith Hamilton second.
All those in favor?
Ms. Ujufuza.
Hi.
Ms. Abbott.
Hi.
Mr. Hamilton.
Hi.
Mr. Katzman.
Hi.
Mr. Kelly.
Hi.
Dr. Ryan.
Hi.
Mr. Aguirre.
Hi. Motion passes seven to zero. And we have a reappointment to the Harbor Commission, Ms. Abby Brown.
Motion to appoint Abby Brown to the Harbor Commission.
Mark Ryan seconded.
All those in favor?
Ms. Ujufuza.
Hi.
Ms. Abbott.
Hi.
Mr. Hamilton.
Hi.
Mr. Katzman.
Hi.
Mr. Kelly.
Hi.
Dr. Ryan.
Hi.
Mr. Aguirre.
Hi. Motion passes seven to zero. Next, we have the Portman School Committee appointment. We have four applicants, Michelle Pope, Jennifer Mosier, Sandra Wong. Isabel Keppe. All four. Dr. Ryan, you have a question?
Uh, no.
Oh.
I have a motion, but I don't have a question.
Oh.
Mr. President, I have a question or a possible suggestion.
Okay.
I would like to see us move this item, table it for tonight, move it to the fourteenth and hold a series of fourteen or fifteen-minute interviews of each candidate rather than taking one off of the resumes. And their applications, obviously. I'd make that a motion to table this until the fourteenth. Have a, a series of interviews starting at, say, six o'clock. Before them.
Fourteen?
That's our next council meeting, right?
Yes.
I just.
Yes, that would be.
I didn't check, but I think it's our next council meeting, correct?
Uh, yeah, that's right. Uh, I see in the attendees that at least some of the applicants are here, are present.
Well. I, uh. And, and I know. I know we had some, a similar format the last time where we had to fill in the school committee application. We had to make two appointments. A similar process where the, you know, applicants came before the council and made a brief introduction and. Made a, you know, just a, we allowed them a few minutes to, to tell us about themselves and why they want to be on the school committee.
Yeah. If I may, Mr. President. If I may, Mr. President, I think it is definitely appropriate that the council hear from school committee candidates. They were afforded, as you pointed out in prior past times. I think that's appropriate that we afford them time to be heard from. I only raised the issue of the fact that some may be present now that they might have thought tonight might be that night. I have no opinion.
Mr. President.
As to whether we. Hear them now or. Table it.
Okay, so, well, right now there's a motion by Mr. Hamilton. Would you be seconding the motion? Mr. Katzman?
I'd like to hear from my other council members.
All right, no, I, I, okay, I just, I didn't want to.
Like, like I said, like I said, I have no, if the, if the school committee candidates are here tonight and wish to be heard, I see no reason to not move forward. If they're not all here or if, for whatever reason, you want to schedule a separate time, because this could take an hour with four people giving fifteen-minute time slots, then.
Right.
I will, I will, the reason I'm deferring, to be clear, is I won't be here on the night, on the fourteenth, so I don't want it to look as though I'm somehow, as I said, I don't want to do it, so.
No, I.
Others wish to, to do so, I'm. That's, that's fine.
Mr. President.
I, oh, sorry.
Yes, Mr. Kelly, I know you were, you were chiming in. Guy, Mr. Kelly?
Yeah, with all due respect, we, we kind of settled on this process. So I'm, I'm ready to move tonight.
Um, Mr. President, I would add that I spoke to this school committee chair to, because I saw how full this agenda would be, to see if it would be all right to push this forward. And she said that they are having organizational meetings, important meetings that would require the new person to be in place. And she wanted it to happen tonight, so I would defer to her desire to move forward, so.
This, and Mr. President. Uh, not, not hearing a second from Mr. Hamilton's motion, I'd like to move that we appoint Ms. Isabel Kelly to the school committee.
Okay.
Um. Mr. President, I, I just think it, it's, I realize it's a long meeting, but I also realize that people might have come, candidates came and were prepared to give a very short statement on their behalf. And I just feel that it would, and that was what was stated in our process, so I'd like to have them each do a very short presentation.
My, my intention, yeah, my intention was to, to hear from the, the four candidates and then have a, you know, then have a discussion as, as a council. Mr. Hamilton brings up a point of, of, we hear, we could hear from them tonight. We could then also have a follow-up on the fourteenth. That was a motion. Mr. Kelly has offered to, he's already made a recommendation and has made it clear he'd like to proceed moving forward tonight. At the moment, there, we don't have a second on, on Mr. Hamilton's motion. What I would like to do is allow the four candidates, the four applicants are available, is that correct? I'd like to, of, of, provide them an opportunity just to, just to say hello and tell us why they like to be on the school committee. I know we have the application for us. You know, and, and we have a, a short session tonight, but let's at least go through and, and hear from the four applicants and then have a discussion as a council.
Yeah, Mr. President, if the chair of the school committee feels it's important to get a person in place tonight, then I support your intention. I think that's probably what we ought to do.
We do have a comment from Ms. Pope that if we didn't appoint someone tonight, they wouldn't be able to attend the newly elected leaders meeting.
Why not?
I, I don't know. I'm just reading the question.
I'm sure, I'm sure we could get somebody into the meeting, it's not till January.
Okay, so.
It's, it's virtual anyways.
Right, so that, that might not be an issue. Let, let us at least, let, let's, let's take a step back and. Let's, I'd like to hear from each of the potential candidates or each of the, each of the candidates, not potential, but candidates. I'd like to hear from each of the candidates.
I think that's appropriate.
Yes. If I could get the applicants to at least raise their hand so we can find you on the list of attendings.
I only see two. Three, there we go. Ms. Moser was hidden.
Promote to panelists, so.
We, but unfortunately, we don't, we have. Correct. So we have three. Um, I can't see there at the moment. Who, all right, so we have.
And Michelle Pope, Isabel Kelly and I believe Jennifer Mosier.
Okay, so we have three of the four applicants. Let's start with, oh, we have Jenny first, so I, I believe that is Jennifer Mosier. And I apologize if I'm saying it wrong. Yep.
Yep.
Promote to panelists.
Hi, thank you. Yes, Jenny. Jenny's my work name, so I realize I log in as Jenny, but Jennifer Mosier. Thank you for hearing me tonight. I appreciate it. As my letter stated, I am a. Graduate of Portsmouth High School. We did the Portsmouth. My eldest was in Little Compton during his freshman year, my second grader. They were unable to support for special ed in Little Compton, as I know Little Compton is K through eight, very small school. So Portsmouth has had a reputation for having such a wonderful special ed program. I jumped at the chance to. I jumped at the chance to move to Portsmouth as my oldest was already in the Portsmouth High School. There, um, I went through the transition where Newport County Special Ed, um, at that point in time separated from Portsmouth High School, or, sorry, Portsmouth Special Ed, which was a fantastic, um, Portsmouth handled the transition and the teachers and the special ed committee. My major goals, um, consist of the inclusivity of special needs, LGBT children, and gender fluid children. I have experience with, personal experience with all those, and I really think that adding, you know, these diversity support groups would be great for Portsmouth and also continuing Portsmouth's fight against bullying. I found that that was a great program and was very impressed with it. And I look forward to hopefully working with you all.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Thank you.
Next, we will go to Isabel Kelly. Hello? Isabel, you need to unmute?
Hi, sorry about that.
Oh, that's okay.
Um, so my name is Isabel Kelly, and my family and I moved here a year ago, and I was really interested in being more involved in the community, and as the parent of three young children, uh, one, three, and five, I thought that the school committee would be a really great place for me to focus my efforts. We plan to be here, you know, for, forever, and we have a lot of family in the area, and I just would like to be as involved as possible, um, with, you know, the children and just doing what I can. I have almost a decade of experience in higher education, and several of those years were spent in financial and project management, and so I spoke to Ms. Copeland and had a really great conversation with her and, and was hopeful that that background of mine would be useful, um, on the school committee and maybe on some of the subcommittees, because I know a lot of it, you know, a big part of their, their efforts are, are budget-related. And, yeah, I would just really welcome the opportunity to be a voice for, for Portsmouth parents and, and whatever I can to help out.
Great, thank you, Ms. Kelly. Next, we have Michelle Pope.
Hi, are you able to hear me?
Yes, we have.
Sorry, it took me a couple times, I apologize. Um, so my name is Michelle Pope. I have lived in Portsmouth for the last twenty years. I am a single mother of three children who are all currently in the Portsmouth School District. I have a senior in high school, a sophomore in high school, and a seventh grader at the middle school. I want to be part of, um, the Portsmouth School Committee, uh, because I really feel that I could help influence, um, some of the goals and reaching the achievement, um, that is so important for our young adults as they enter into their adulthood, whether that be in trade or further education, um, much like, um, I believe it was, um, I think it was Ms. Kelly, um, I have a, a young, my youngest son is part of the, uh, special services. Uh, he's been receiving services through, uh, first Newport County and now Portsmouth since he was, um, pre-K. It has helped him, um, be able to stay aligned with his classmates and, uh, to progress in his, um, reading and writing, um, to a level that I don't think would have been attained, um, without the special services. I feel that we need to have, um, more, uh, representation from a diversity perspective on the board, uh, reflecting, um, the different types of households and families that exist in the community, um, and I feel that I would be a, a great voice, um, for those families and other stakeholders. So, um, I'm grateful for the opportunity, um, and I hope that I will be working with you soon. Thank you.
Thank you.
And then we do, um, and I'm not sure, unmuted, Jay Stevens.
Jay Stevens, okay. We're, we had one other hand up, which is Jay Stevens, is, is that... Is that Sandra Blom, Blom? Hello? Hello? We're trying to, uh, reach out to Jay Seven? No, okay. All right. Are you, did you? Okay. All right, well, um, I mean, we, we have heard from three of the applicants. Before we, before we move on, I would just like to, to thank all four applicants, uh, for, for submitting for this position. I think all, you know, each one of the candidates, uh, has, you know, excellent skills and would do well on the school committee. Unfortunately, we can only appoint one person tonight. This is not a, you know, it's a, it's an awkward, uh, process for us to select someone based on an application process, um, and then have everything discussed out in public, so I, I do appreciate, um, I do appreciate you putting yourselves out there, uh, before the council tonight, um, and, and really, uh, we do want to thank all four of you for, for submitting. With that, I would like to go back to our counselors, um, and get some feedback. Does anybody have any comments?
I believe Mr. Kelly had made a motion already, I'll second his motion for discussion.
Thank you.
All right, so, all right, so we have a motion for, um, Ms. Isabel Kelly and a second for discussion. Mr. Hamilton?
All right, does Ms. Abbott want to chime in?
No, I just wanted to, to second what, uh, Mr. Aguirre said, and it's, uh, we have four very strong applicants, it's kind of hard to, to pick one. I'm, I was very happy to see four really solid, great applicants, and I thank the four of them for, for coming forward and volunteering to sit on our, our school committee, and, um, you know, it's hard to, to have to pick one, so...
So before we, I know we have a motion and a second for Ms. Isabel Kelly, would, and, and this is where we kind of, uh, had some questions the last go-around with how we actually made the application process or how we did, went through the selection process. We do have a limited bit of information in front of us, um, and we do need to make a decision to go forward to the school committee. Is, are there any other, um, would any other counselors like to make, uh, a recommendation to the school committee that we will know if there are other candidates that would be, uh, being presented tonight?
Sure, Mr. President, I, I believe as I've read through and I did not reach out to any of the candidates, because I was hoping to, we did have sort of an interview process. You know, we only saw these resumes and these applications, uh, on Thursday. I think it would be best for both this appointment and future appointments to school committee or the town council to, uh, for the counselors to hold an interview process where we could at least discuss some of the issues each individual candidate and see how they respond to those issues. It's, it's great to have their backgrounds and their resumes and on a piece of paper, but I prefer that we would leave this until the fourteenth and have an interview with all four.
Thank you, Mr. Hamilton. Ms. Jufusa, did, okay?
I, I would just say that, um, I presented the procedures for selection back in September, and I would have appreciated Mr. Hamilton's comments back then, because I, you know, I, I too agree, we, we could have done that, but given the situation we find ourselves in now, um, I believe that, um, we can make a legitimate decision based on the information before us, and, um, so I would, um, just say that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jufusa. Mr. Catson?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to say, um, while we have four qualified people, I think it's, it's notable to me that they are all differently qualified. They, these applicants present, uh, unique sets, uh, of, of skills, and, uh, it's not a matter of picking the best, it's a matter of picking, you know, what we feel and what the school committee may feel, uh, serves the whole endeavor of the school committee best. So in terms of looking at other, other folks, I, I would support the motion, uh, for Isabel Kelly. And those, so that's my thoughts on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Catson. Dr. Ryan?
Yeah, um, looking at the resumes, uh, and listening to at least three of the candidates speak, um, I don't think we can go wrong appointing any of them. They seem all well-qualified to serve in the school committee, and, uh, you know, I'm not sure what, from any of them, they all seemed intelligent, interested, they've had kids who are either in the school system or have recently gone through it, and I think any of these people would be an excellent candidate. I certainly hope that regardless which one we choose tonight, the other three continue to take an interest in town affairs and apply to other positions, uh, because when you've got this much talent, the town could really, could certainly use it.
Thank you, Dr. Ryan. Okay, so we, um, we have one motion and a second for the appointment of, of Ms. Isabel Kelly to the school committee. There are no other candidates, uh, no other, uh, motions?
Well, well, technically, if we go under Robert's rules, we can't make a motion to appoint somebody else the way we have it set up. If, if that were available, I would make a motion to appoint Michelle Pope as opposed to Ms. Kelly. Um, I think she has a better background, specifically in the fact that she has an MBA and she works up at Citizens Bank, and she has a financial background, and I think would fall better into the budgetary process. I think Ms. Kelly would be great to be a liaison or a help to the school committee in terms of processes, if the school committee were to start a grant committee, um, but in terms of overall skill sets, I think Michelle Pope would be a better person, so I would make an appoint, a, a motion to appoint her, um, to the school committee, but being under Robert's rules, I technically can't.
Mr. President, um, this is Linda, I, I just would like to also add that I, I believe it's important to have diversity on, as much as possible, on the school committee, and it, it, after, um, Ms. Holdman stepped down, we, no, we only have one person on the committee that is a parent of young children, and so, um, because of that, I would tend to, um, favor, um, Ms. Kelly, um, also because of her grants experience and, um, her international experience as well as her experience in higher education. Thank you.
Technically, the only person without ki- children in the school system anymore is Ms. Mosier, correct?
I, I believe, well, I, I believe three of the applicants do have children in the school system, and as Mr. Hamilton mentioned, Ms. Mosier had, uh, children go through the school system, so I think all, all four applicants, uh, are familiar with the, the Portsmouth school system, and three of them currently have children that are in school or entering school and sworn in the bullpen that will be in the schools. So, um, I, I do, I do, uh, appreciate the fact that we have some applicants that, uh, that have, you know, have a vested interest here in, in being on the school committee. And maybe I used the wrong term. I guess we should have, I, I should have, I know Mr. Kelly made a motion and it's been seconded, I, I think maybe it would have been nominations, um, but it's clear that, um, we've got a motion and a second for Ms. Kelly. I believe we have, at least, uh, we moved forward with that. Uh, Mr. Hamilton made a motion, it was not seconded, um, so we have a motion and a second to appoint Ms. Isabel Kelly to the school committee. All those in favor?
Ms. Jufusa?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott? Mr. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Catson?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Mr. Aguirre?
Aye. Motion passes six with one.
President, can I just make one more comment? It's kind of an editorial comment, but I, I wish that, that the criteria of having the school system was utilized previous, because the last two appointments by this council did not have children in the school system, but...
Sure, um, Mr. Hamilton, uh, in fact, Juan Carlos Payaro did.
Does, didn't.
Or does, does have children in the school system.
He does now, did not then.
Yeah, his son that was going into kindergarten, technicality.
All right, oops.
If I may, Mr. President?
Yes.
Whenever the town council asks to appoint someone to a subcommittee, a sub-sub-subcommittee, or the school committee, or the town council itself, it is not etching into stone the sole criteria by which it shall thereafter forever appoint somebody. The council remains free, every council, including the next one and the one after that, to choose whatever criteria they want. If the people of Portsmouth don't like that criteria, they're free to vote in different people, and that's how it works. So I appreciate Mr. Hamilton's, uh, appeal to precedent, but that's not what the council does.
Thank you, Catson. I would like to move on, uh, at this point, and I do again want to thank, before moving on, sorry, uh, all the applicants, though, I mean, this is, uh, you know, this, this is a, a, an odd way of doing things, that it's, because we're filling a vacancy, um, so it, I appreciate everybody's patience, uh, it's not a perfect system, um, and I, I know that, uh, that Ms. Kelly will do well, I think all the applicants would do well on the school committee, um, and with, with that, uh, we will move on.
Mr. President, I think just for the record, I think it needs to be pointed out that Mr. Kelly and Ms. Kelly have no relation, just so there's no...
That's true. We do not have any relation.
I, I, I know that, Andrew, but I just wanted to make sure that that's clear to everybody else.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I would have recused myself if we were related.
Understood, one would hope.
Okay, uh, all right, on to old business. First item under old business, Mr. Ryan?
Mr. President, Council, um, this has been a long process, uh, over a year and a half of negotiation. Uh, so what you have before you in your package is the proposed collective bargaining agreement between the town, town of Portsmouth and, uh, the police union, um, is the International Brotherhood of Police Officers. In this contract, we negotiated a two percent pay raise for each of the five years of the collective bargaining agreement. We negotiated a five-year agreement versus a three-year agreement. Uh, the department will join, uh, much as the fire department did the state municipal employee retirement system, uh, so they will be out of the, uh, town-managed 401A. Uh, they will contribute ten percent plus an additional one percent for the duration of the collective bargaining agreement, so eleven percent, uh, they will contribute to that pension system. Overtime will be limited in all shifts, uh, when compensatory time is utilized. For those hired after July first, two thousand twenty-one, the town will pay out thirty-five percent of your sick leave on retirement, uh, as opposed to, I'm sorry, uh, crew sick leave as opposed to fifty percent of his benefit. And then over the next six months, uh, both parties have agreed to negotiate in good faith a ranking structure that will provide for a corporal on each shift. All the provisions to the proposed agreement, uh, have been, uh, tentatively agreed to by, uh, the negotiating team, and in this package, you will see also the, uh, financial impact statement, so we respectfully request that you approve this, uh, negotiated agreement.
Thank you, Mr. Ryan. Do you have any questions from council? Uh, and, and we've all been through the, the mediation process.
This one's kind of familiar to you guys.
Yes, uh, we do have, uh, you see a hand up, uh, Mr. Fitzmorris? Yes, we do have, you see, a hand up, Mr. Fitzmaurice.
Thank you, Mr. President. Larry Fitzmaurice, 50, Kristen Court. My memory was that the state law limited labor contracts for municipal governments to three years. Did that change?
I'm not aware of that law. It was a superior court judge that recommended five years.
And who was this?
Frank Williams, yes.
Frank Williams, okay. Let me make a general comment. This is the first time we've had a fiscal impact statement. And I want to thank the town administrator and the council for having this up here so we can take a look at it. It looks like a fairly conservative contract. If, and I presume this presents all of the costs associated with the labor contract. It's also the first time the council's voted in public on one of these labor contracts in some time. So I appreciate that as well. So I think this is a good development. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzmaurice, for your comments.
This is Keith Hamilton, motion to approve the new police contract.
Linda Ujufuza, second.
All those in favor?
Ms. Ujufuza?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Hamilton?
Aye.
Captain?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Mr. Agnew?
Aye. Motion passes seven to zero. Next item under old business, the proposed amendment to chapter 405 of the solar ordinance. We include our solar ordinance. Now, I do acknowledge that we have some folks chiming in, but do we have Mr. Chappelle? Yes, well, because we need to, this is a public hearing on a solar ordinance. Just to, before we get started, you know, this, have a, we've already gone through a public hearing on the, on the solar ordinance. The council did hear, you know, the applicant, we did render decision. There is a technicality, so we are having, or a potential technicality, I don't want to speak out of turn, but we are restarting the public hearing on the solar ordinance. So what I would like is for Mr. Chappelle to walk us through the solar ordinance. Good evening, Mr. Chappelle.
Good evening, everyone. How are you? All set?
We are, we are ready.
All right. I'm not going to go into how we got back here tonight. I don't think that helps anybody. But I'd be a little remiss if I didn't read things and worry about some of the comments. It was done, it is, we are just victims if this happens of COVID. This was done exactly how we would be hired to do anything else. If we're hired to change the law, we first get in front of the council and say, there is a proposed law change. Do you wish to send it to advertisement? That happened when we began this process back in June of 2019. And because it was clear that it wasn't just going to be my draft of an ordinance, but an ordinance that would require input not only from the planning board, but from your zoning officer and your planning department, we originally suspended advertisements and went to full notice at workshops in the planning board. And I believe we had three separate planning board meetings, the final of which was, came to a recommendation of an ordinance to present in front of you. And as I told you last time, the planning board was done with their comments. And Gary Crosby and Mike Assel, who toiled at looking at the model ordinance and comparing the seven or eight other progressive ordinances in the state meeting ordinance that were done after the model ordinance, on an old reference in someone's statute to a solar ordinance. There were changes made and it was presented to the council. And it was all set to go advertised properly. It was on for either March 11th or 14th. We all know that was doomsday of our great pandemic. I assure you, I did not cause the pandemic so that I could fake the hearing, set it up for April so that some butters didn't know about it. But what the ordinance really does is we got to go back in that very brief history. And I'm going to, because there's new members of the audience, I think I have to say that. But if you recall, we always had a zoning ordinance. We've had one since 1964. And for all purposes, we always had a solar ordinance because our ordinance said, if it's not specifically listed in the use tables, then we put it to the task of the zoning board to have a vote on what, for zoning purposes, analogies can be drawn. And if a utilities, for instance, or a farming analogy can be drawn and it's allowed in a certain area as a special use permit, then we had full hearings when we tried to get one approved up on Jepson Lane under a special use permit criteria. My office was successful in having that done in a residential zone and it was appealed by the neighbors. And there is a decision by Judge Van Kugan who said, the problem, right, wrong, right or wrong, it's under appeal, but right or wrong, he said, the problem with the ordinance is the zoning board shouldn't be drawing analogies of whether or not the use that Mr. Chappelle is proposing is close to this or close to that and which standard we should apply. They said only the town council can decide whether or not solar, for instance, allowed, is to be allowed in Portsmouth, and we should have an individual ordinance. And when that happened, that put a kind of a freeze throughout town, not only on our solar arrays, but on the poor guy that wanted to put solar on his roof and the guy that wanted to put eight panels in his yard because his roof didn't face south. There was another petition that was filed that was defeated, basically because there was no ordinance. And it became important to try to get an ordinance. And I was hired by a client, not one of the ones from the area that seems to be most interested in the ordinance tonight, but to put together an ordinance. And that's how it came to be in the proposal. So I think the best way to go through the ordinance now is not to just point out what it is, but to point out what it is not. Because at the benefit of reading online, so many things that people say this new ordinance does or doesn't do, and they're just not, in all cases, accurate. I certainly don't begrudge any neighbor of saying that they want a shot. They want to be able to stand in front of a planning board or a zoning board and they want to be heard. They want notice. They want to stand up and say, not in my backyard, or I'm not against solar and it's okay if it's in my backyard, but I want more safeguards than either this ordinance thinks about or they think it thinks about. So with that said, I think it's important to go through it. Solar is, I don't think reasonable men these days can argue whether solar is a good thing. I haven't met the person that stands up and says, other than that owns too much stock in Exxon, that fossil fuels are the way to go and the climate control is a joke. Our federal government has said, please move towards the green fuels. Our state has asked us to get through mandates and to get through certain percentages by the year 2025. And town of Portsmouth, more than perhaps any other town, knows that the two ways to do this may be wind and solar. And there is more problems with wind known by this council than there are with solar. We've heard about birds and we've heard about noise and we've heard about vibration. So the solar energy is just a good thing. We just need to balance on where we put it and what rights and safeguards we can do to neighbors to minimize impacts. So I'm going to highlight our ordinance. And I think the best way to go through it is if you have it in front of you or up on the board and we'll scroll. This is page one of eight. And know that when you propose a zoning ordinance, what we really did is we're proposing Article 20, the solar ordinance. And that's probably where we should start. But when Article 20 says you can have a solar ordinance, we have to cross-reference at least two other sections. We have to go into Article Five Use Regulations and say, here's where it's allowed by a special use permit. Here's where it's not allowed. Here's where it's permitted. Or here where it goes, here's where it goes to major land review. But we'll come back to this chart on where we decide and what the standard is. But it's really just a cross-reference. If we could scroll down to page two, if that's possible. So two begins Article 10. And we start with the purpose and intent. And again, I'm not going to spend any, that much time on it. But the purpose and intent is solar is good. We need to balance where it goes to minimize impacts and effects, especially on residential areas. Section B talks about permits required. It was taken right out of the ordinance. What it means to tell you and tell the people is, if the planning board approves it under a major land development, or if the zones it, that doesn't get rid of all of the other criteria that every person putting in a solar array needs to do. You need licensed electricians. It needs to be done in accordance with the procedural standards of the fire department. It needs building permits to support the structures. It has the same rules about 100 mile an hour winds and hurricane concerns that every other structure in has in our town. So Section B merely says, it's not just this ordinance. You need every other permit that anybody would put in to have a shed with electricity or, and comply with all the state solar licensing. Section C talks about classifications. And really, it's this simple. There's the roof mounted system that is traditionally put on your house to power your own building. They have always been allowed. People may say they're pretty. They may say they're not pretty. But as a practical matter, they've always been allowed merely with a building permit. They now are still allowed on your roof. There's reasonable criteria in the ordinance that says, don't make them higher than your roof. Don't put wings on your roof making it look like a spaceship. It has to be inside the confines. It has to be properly documented. It has to be properly wired. And this ordinance has allowed people to put, while we thought it was implemented, it's allowed people to put roof systems back on their roof like they always did. Number two in the small array is really the guy who either doesn't want it on his roof, or the guy whose roof does not face south or southeast, so he can have a reasonable amount of panels, not to exceed 1,600 square feet. He has to meet all setbacks of his district. He has to meet all lot coverage criteria. What we're really talking about when we talk about these arrays is three and four, which are medium and large. And the medium and large definitions came from the state ordinance. By the time we pass this, there really isn't any difference in the town of Portsmouth, because everywhere you could put a medium, you could put a large, and everywhere you could put a large, you could put a medium. And the criteria for both of them are identical. So although they're bigger or smaller, and the boards could look at what additional safeguards may be needed because of the size of them, there are statutorily no differences between the two. D is the use regulations, again, that we're going to come back to, because that's where you can do it. And we do it in a residential zone. If so, what criteria? And we do it in a commercial zone. If so, what criteria? And industrial and a light industrial. Section E really starts with, what is going in my backyard? And it starts with height. Now, there are a number of ordinances that say that the height restriction for a panel just cannot exceed the height restriction in the district. Well, that's kind of ridiculous. That would be a 35-foot panel or a 30-foot panel in most districts. Some of the ordinances that they've asked, asked me to look at, Dartmouth and Westport, have some 16-foot panels. 12-foot is generally the minimum height, and it's measured at the highest piece. Remember, the panel might be 10 feet by five feet and on a pole. The highest piece of that panel can be 12 feet. And that's important, because if you talk about screening from neighbors or screening from roads, a 20-foot panel would take a completely different set of screening than a 12-foot panel. On building mounted systems, then we generally think of that as a commercial building like a Clemens that has a flat roof or a Raytheon. The planning board said, you can put it on top of a roof, but you still can't use it to exceed the height limit. Our ordinance allows things like chimneys and things like antennas to be higher than the minimum limit. This is a conservative ordinance. If you have a 35-foot building in a zone that allows 35 feet, you cannot have panels on your roof. If you have a 30-foot building, you need to figure out a way to make them only stick up five feet. That is a more conservative view than many of the ordinances we looked at. Number two is also important, and it comes up in a number of different sections, but it's yard setbacks and vegetative buffers. Here we have to draw, I'm not going to spend too much time on the small system, because I don't think that's really what most of the objections are about. Again, the small system is the guy with a number of panels in his yard. He, like his shed, has to have it 20 feet from his rear yard and 15 feet from his side yard and 30 feet from his front yard, and has to meet standard coverage, just like his shed would. But because it's small and because it's generally can be screened, the criteria is different. On the larger systems, our setbacks that were proposed after reading a number or ordinances are 50 feet. Now, remember, a commercial zone has a 30-foot front yard setback, 30-foot rear yard, I think, and 20-foot side yards. So these are more than target. Target, it may be 20 feet off a rear yard. If a array goes in, it must be 50 feet. So it's actually two and some percentage more than a commercial building. When we get to the other parts of the section, it also must meet a number of other criteria. And that is that it is designed to screen and designed so that neighbors can have an, have input at these hearings on, I don't want to see this. How can you assure me that that's not going to happen? So vegetated buffer areas must be 30 feet wide. So now we have a 50-foot setback, and 30 feet of that minimum has to be vegetated where it abuts residential. Remember in our normal ordinance, because I know at least a couple of you have sat on the zoning board, if target goes next to a residential, it's a 20-foot setback. It's a five-foot vegetated area. This is a 50-foot setback with a 30-foot vegetated area. A vegetated area, I may add, where either the planning board or the zoning board, depending on who it's in front of, has the right to order me to get a landscape architect to give me a breakdown of every tree to make sure that they are planted at a height designed to meet the criteria of, obviously, I could put in seedlings and I could affect neighbors for eight or 10 years. They have a right to pick how large they are, types of trees, and how they are designed to be evergreens or leard cypress or things like that. Now, lot coverage, and we'll get back to that when we get into subparagraph G, but lot coverage for the medium and large arrays, we talk about the setbacks. So now we have 50-foot setbacks and you can put the array in between them. This has come up as an issue in a couple of different ordinances. Some people measure each panel and say, if the panel is 12 by 8, and it's sitting at a 30 degree, if thou look straight down at it, it would be 10 by 8. That counts as 80 square feet. Multiply that by the number of panels and divide that by the applicable lot coverage. Generally, when you look out at a solar array, it is what it is. Nobody is looking at it, I don't think, and saying it is a thing of beauty. But there are panels that are dense side by side, and north, south, they are set off enough so that the shadow of one does not become an issue with the second. And there's a lot of area between them. When we talk about lot coverage, think about a 10-acre commercial lot. We're allowed, or in light industry, a 10-acre lot. You could have a two and a half acre building. You could then, in a, that's two and a half acres, that's 100,000 square foot building. We have no buildings like that in Portland, but I know of. But that is how big you could put it. And it could be 35 feet high, and that is exclusive of parking lots and areas for the 150 people that may work there. In a solar array. In a solar array, they are designed not to be seen. They are designed to have the 50 foot setbacks in every direction. They're designed to have the vegetative buffers so that they can't be seen. And then if you look out and you made the space between those 20 feet instead of 10, it wouldn't change it really from a zoning point of view. Lot coverage is generally about previous surfaces and surface water drainage. What this ordinance says is every applicant needs to go to the planning board. And he needs to demonstrate that the density of the panels inside of all of the setbacks do not create stormwater, surface water and drainage issues, which is generally what lot coverage is trying to address. The, trying to see where we were. So on the paragraph F, I'm kind of going to skip over. But F basically says it's the same as the model ordinance. And it is what you would expect it to be. There is no fly-by-night application. You must hire a registered land surveyor to identify all wetlands, all areas of interest, all historic cemeteries, all natural boundaries. You must draw the plan to show exactly where the array is going to go. You must locate the fence. You must have a six foot fence. You must follow the signage plan. You have to get fire department and electric approval. There has to be an emergency response program. There has to be a commission or a decommission bond. So that if the company goes out of business, we don't have some solar farm laying there. They've established in other towns and the recommendation of the state that that should be 110%. Developer has to come in and say, it would cost us this much to take it down and this much to reseed. They make it 110% bond, you quote that. And if it ceases to operate for a period of, I believe, one year, the town can come in, spend that bond and put that property right back to what it was. H talks about the landscaping plan. And again, it's a, it's a registered architect. It's a vegetation plan for the project, a maintenance schedule. Evidence that there's a preliminary interconnection study needs to be done. And G talks about an estimation of annual taxes for revenue. I need you to understand something, that solar isn't so bad for a town, at least under the following. If I own a 20 acre parcel of land, I pay $10,000 or so in real estate taxes. That's a lot to maintain that open. So I have some choices. I can farm it. But if I farm that 20 acre parcel, instead of the town receiving $10,000 in tax revenue, they generally will receive $400 in tax revenue. Because those 10 acres will be taxed at $2,500 per acre. And since we have a rate of about $16 per thousand, it's an insignificant piece of money. So keeping the lot on the payroll keeps that 10,000. Then there's the improvement. If you all look at your tax bills, you may have a $500,000 tax bill at home. 250 for your house and 250 for the improvement. Well, what, how do we tax the improvements known as those panels? Well, the state came in and said, let's not make this different in every town and community. Let's tax them by kilowatt. So depending on how big a system is, you not only get the underlying land tax, the $10,000 on 10 acres or whatever that is, but you also get the kilowatts. I have recently been involved in the Middletown solar that were the two tank farms. Those tank farms were going to generate approximately $55,000 a year in personal property taxes. That's, I think, a seven, I forgot it was seven gig. But it's a price per, but it, it's a sizable amount of money for personal property. If I farm the property and don't put a building on it, it comes off the rolls altogether. If I sell my 10 acres and try to preserve it and keep it because I can't afford to just look at it to the nature conservancy, it also goes down to a fairly insignificant tax. And for my children that I'm trying to keep value, I have kind of sold off some of the rights. This is a punt. 25 years is the standard lease for these solar projects. And in 25 years, that land is still there. It doesn't have a factory on it that somebody else can come into. It is basically a way to preserve land that has some implications. And the implications are not noise. They are not vibration. They are not smell. They are not odor. They are not traffic. There is, for all purposes, zero traffic, zero noise, zero odors. They are the definition, if even industrial, of light industry. They have little or no effect, except you need to look at it. And if you could, let's look at the real problem. If we drive down West Main Road right now, any of you who have been across the state of the ordinance, you've seen a solar farm go in on federal land. Let's start with, that is not a Portsmouth plan. That did not need to go to a planning board. That did not need to go to a zoning board. Had it gone, our ordinance says that the keepers of the ordinance, the people we put in charge of doing the things with our land, would have listened to town officials and neighbors and said, that needs to be screened. And unless you can demonstrate it to me that a screen can be done, so we won't see it from our road, I won't approve it. And if you think a screen can or can't be done, I'm going to ask you to think of St. Mary's. If we drive down East Main Road in St. Mary's, anybody that's been here for 15 years, notice there used, there used to be 10 foot snowdrifts in East Main Road. And we used to close the road there. And instead, they put on St. Mary's property, even though it was a big, beautiful field on the right, they put a row of rhododendrons and a row of leland cypress. And now you cannot even see that field. If that field had solar panels in it, you would not see it in the main. Five years after planting and from a car at a four foot height, as it goes to a truck, it is clearly possible to be professional architects and plantings those things. Now, if we can go down a little further?
Sorry, can I just stop for a minute? Can someone in Town Hall mute the mic? We're getting really bad feedback from Town Hall and it's really hard to hear what you're saying.
I'm sorry.
No, it's okay. It actually just started recently, but it's, it's difficult. Thank you.
I think if we go to section G now, because again, the development plans are again, just how much detail a developer needs to go in or a solar onus needs to go in to demonstrate that he's technically done everything according to the rules and regulations of not only the town, but the state and the industry. But site design is really important. So A, I think I'm going to read out loud because this is what I read on Facebook. I read that the public, the people in town should have more of a say of whether something can go or can't go. And should have more of a say of when, of the impact on them. And more of a say on what could be done to make this acceptable to me. And if you read A, it says, solar energy systems shall, not may, shall be located, constructed, installed and operated to minimize potentially adverse impacts to nearby properties, natural resources and/or individuals. So both the planning board sitting as a major subdivision review and the zoning board sitting as a special use permit have the right to hear neighbors. They're all public hearings. Major plan subdivision is notified to all abutters and a public hearing. The planning board's special use permit is notification to abutters and a public hearing. So everyone has a right to do it. And they have a right to say, hey, I'm affected. Look at the habitat here. There's birds here. There's this here. I'm going to be able to see it. This fence is inadequate. There's a six foot fence. There's a 50 foot setback. The 50 foot setback does not say there shall be a 50 foot setback. This ordinance says the minimum setback will be 50 feet. And the board, the planning board and the zoning board have a right to increase that after hearing neighbors say that it's going to be a bigger impact on them or if they can minimize the impact. And with language that they shall minimize to potential neighbors and that 50 is a minimum and they expressly have the power in both boards to go bigger and to make the screening larger, we have, in my opinion, given the boards the power, whether it's a, whether you're in a light industry area and are approved by the planning board or whether you are in a residential area approved by the zoning board, both those boards have specific authority to increase the buffers and to increase the plantings and shall do it in a way to minimize impacts. And I think that was the biggest thing I saw in Facebook and those things, that everybody kind of was on the understanding that I don't think I'm going to get a chance. I didn't hear a lot of people say I'm against solar. I didn't even hear a lot of people say not in my backyard. I heard if it was further away or if it was screened better, I think that would be better. And I'm hard pressed, other than screening and site, you know, again, look at a 10 acre light industrial commercial piece on West Main Road. Look what can go there as a matter of right. It can be a Budweiser bottling plant without any review to speak of. And as a solar 12 foot high with screening, with buffers, it has to go through what appears to be at least two or three series of, of public hearings, if it's, if it's either on residential or at least two, if it's because it goes to the design review as well. So I believe that all of that is in place. I believe the ordinance was not what I would call over developer friendly. I believe it was thought out by a planning board who sits there and does PUDs or, or, or planned urban development and considered what they normally hear and gave them the power to do things as opposed to a carte blanche, it was allowed here. And I believe with all of the safeguards, this is an ordinance that is progressive. There are other areas that I, I read about, about habitats and woodlands. This is designed and it says, don't be clearing forests without what is absolutely necessary. If you have a farm and a forest, we want it on some of the open land. We don't want taken out forests. That was particularly argued in both Little Compton and Tiverton. And all due respect, there's a lot more forests over there and large areas of tracts. And if you start thinking in town, most of these areas that we've heard about where things may go are, are either farmland or on the area on West Main Road, mainly brush, not, not a, not a mature forest like we might see down at the Melville campground, for instance. So, you know, I, I believe you had the power. I believe you thought about it. I believe the planning board thought about it. I clearly commended last time and have to do again, Mike and Gary, Mike Essiola and Gary Crosby, who, who really were responsible for the rewrites. And I would again, ask you to pass it and I'm available for any questions. We'll go back now to the regulation table. Because if you recall, that was the point of, some points of contention. So as you know, every use in town, it can be a gas station, it can be a house. There is a table that says R10, 20, right through TC. I know you all know, but R10 through R60 is merely residential, 10,000 square feet, 20,000, 30,000, 40,000 and 60,000. C1 stands for commercial. IL stands for light industry. IH for heavy industry. WD for waterfront district. And TC is for the town center. The planning board looked at the town center and thought there really weren't any good places for it anyway. And if you look at the definition of our town center, said it doesn't belong there downtown. We really want to save that for a place for the retail and where people would meet commercially. That's why the N is there. An N means no, it means you could not do it unless you did what's called a full use variance. The P for accessory roof mounted, that means permitted. That means go down and get your building permit and have the building inspector check off all the boxes on the application that you have a proper electrician, proper wiring, proper roof support and, and those things. Other than that, there is really no permitting for the regular, what we call solar arrays, other than the house, small solar and the accessories. The large and the medium, nothing is a matter of right. Ours is a little unique, and I told you this last time. And the reason it's unique is that generally speaking, the model ordinance recommended the planning board did this as a major subdivision review. Planning board under major subdivision review generally says it's allowed if we can meet the criteria of the ordinance and put in enough of the safeguards to satisfy the intent of the comprehensive plan. Portsmouth has always had a planning board, and I speak very highly of all of them, I'm there all the time, that has been very good with the technical aspects, the drainage, the roads, the physical layout. And the zoning board has oftentimes listened to neighbors and heard the concerns of neighbors and tried to balance them between development. So in residential areas where the zoning board just thrives at dealing with decks and pools and tennis courts and additions and neighbors against neighbors or neighbors for neighbors, all, everything in the residential area is in a special use permit and goes to the zoning board. For consistency, if you are in a residential area, you not only need a special use permit, but it also goes to the planning board for major land review. That's because we want them consistent. We do not want a approved solar array in a residential area that doesn't have all of the criteria of the ordinance that's called for in the major land review. So in residential, you get two bites, if you will, you're going to both. In those area, commercial, light industry, heavy industry, these are zoning areas where we allow either manufacturing or commercial and those things. Our zoning ordinance is designed so that in residential area, we won't have stuff that's as loud or as noisy or as smelly. And in manufacturing areas, we're going to put our boat building and our things that, that if people move there, they say, hey, you know, I understand I live next to manufacturing. Again, solar is, if I asked you, even if you called it manufacturing, if I asked you right now to try to come into your mind, one thing that is lighter than light manufacturing than, than solar panels. One industrial use that's allowed by either special use permit or as a matter of right in our ordinance, that has less noise, less odor, is 12 feet high, has less traffic and living next to it other than seeing it. If you can come up with one, I'll go away. But other than a vacant field, this is a fairly innocuous use from zoning points of view. When a guy owns a zoning, a lot in a light industry or commercial area and is charged $10,000 a year in taxes, he has to have some rights. When you own a residential lot, you have a right to build a house. That's good. But if I have a, I should have the right, there are, have to be some things in our ordinance that are allowed. And to merely say that this has to go full criteria, major land review, to make sure we have all the safeguards for the neighbors, but other than that's allowed, is not a stretch under any zoning principles at all. This is just a very light innocuous use. And these are the very areas. If you read our zona, zoning ordinance under light industry, it says, promote a type of manufacturing and commercial tax base that has no noise, no vibration and no odor, odor whenever possible. Again, you've kind of defined solar, in my opinion. So if we can screen it, and if we give them the opportunity to screen it, this chart seems to be working for us. Remember that we proposed a couple of different things that might have been a little more liberal last time. And in the vote that didn't count, you changed some things to special use permit that were permitted. I didn't go back and ask for what the original, I started with saying, whatever you thought we were approving last time was fine with us today. So there are no changes to what I thought was accomplished back in May. I think that's about it. Any questions? Uh-oh, I can't hear anybody.
No, I was, I was muted. I got shut down by my own, my own staff here. Mr. Spell, thank you. A very, I think this time around, a little more comprehensive assessment of things. I do appreciate. Assessment of things. Um, I do appreciate you addressing some of the. Items that have been at the forefront um, with, with respect to uh setbacks and notification. You know, th- these are very important things uh, to any development project that goes on in town. You know, being on the zone, I, I, I was on the zoning board. So I'm very familiar with the process and, and those are things that both our planning board and our zoning board deal with. The, the folks that are on those boards are very thorough. Um, so I, so I do agree that um. That our boards are uh, more than capable of reviewing. All types of petitions, not just a solar petition, but you know, anything that comes before them from the land development to. Some of the zoning, the decks and the sheds and the pools. Uh, you know, they, they, they do a great job. Uh, no matter what type of, of application comes before them. So I just wanted to thank you for the overview. Uh, I know we have some, some folks lined up. Do counselors have any questions before I open it up to, uh, it is a public hearing, so I do need to open it up. Do the counselors have any questions?
I just have some, some comments. I think um, I think you're right, Mr. Chappell. Unfortunately, we are um, victims of COVID. And I think that kind of is changed the perception a little bit. I think it's also um, unfortunate that the Navy did what they did. I think that kind of really brought the issue to the forefront and some feedback that I've heard. That is very obviously not what people want to see in Portland. So I, you know, maybe there's a middle ground, but I, I think. You know. We might want to consider making some revisions to this ordinance. To better address some of the concerns of from our residents. Like for example, maybe just uh, not allowed for large solar and medium solar in any of those residential zoning areas. Um, I can't imagine that it would be permitted anyway. Um, I would certainly hope not frankly. But maybe making those changes and actually putting it in, you know, in ink. Would really go a long way towards making the residents of Portsmouth more comfortable with this ordinance. I think what's happened on West Main Road is a shame. It's very unfortunate. It is hideous. And I know that you drafted an ordinance that has a lot of safe measures. But I would also like to add that, you know, it's for people that are busy with. Jobs and kids and running around, it's um, keeping tabs on everything that the, the planning board and zoning board do is uh, can be a full-time job. So I don't, I, I, I like, I would prefer to have more safe. You know, safety measures in the ordinance to protect the residents of Portsmouth and to protect the um. You know, the quality of life and aesthetic and, and feel that we, we believe we want in the town of Portsmouth. And it is cap, and that is um, theoretically captured in our draft comprehensive plan. Than to tell people that they have the right to come protest stuff. I, I, I don't like using that as an argument to, to, for people to protect themselves. I would rather see that in writing in, in our ordinance. So that people can be assured that the, the negative impacts would, you know, won't happen. Or there is no possibility of them happening yet. The, the other thing that I will add is that we do have, we have the planning board, we have the zoning board. We also have a design review board. And they review plans for developments, they make tweaks to building, they adjust things. So that they meet a set aesthetic and a set feel so that we can maintain. You know, the, the kind of charm, shall we say, that we. We all agree that we want for the town of Portsmouth. You can't do that for a, for a solar farm, right? So you, you, you did address some, you do address some of that stuff with the buffers and vegetative. Buffers and setbacks and everything, but I think um, i- it might behoove us to, to make it a little. Even a little bit more conservative than it is right now. So that's my point of view now. And I know that is a change from what we've seen before, but between COVID and West Main Road, I think public perception has also changed. And I think that has impacted my opinion.
Okay, so there, there's two, there's very quick comments and you, uh, scroll to page two for me, please. So is one of the, I think that's page one. Uh, zoning, oh, I need to see the top of page two. There it is. Up, 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 up. The section B. I'm getting dizzy. Down, that's page one. So section B, zoning enforcement officer. So now this is the cross-reference where now that you've made a special use permit. It fits under the special use permit criteria. And if you see Sue, it says the zoning enforcement officer shall transmit completed application to the border review. And if required by the article, the planning board and design review board. So this on all special use permits will go the design review board. And if you go to uh, page six. Again, I think your points are great. I'm just trying to point out why. Cause I think the biggest thing is, and I do think that that federal. There's only two people that don't have to follow this ordinance, the feds and the town. And I'm pretty sure the town wouldn't do this on their property without being a good neighbor, but unfortunately. The, the feds did not have to come. But if you read the uh. I, I mean F, if you want to go down just a little mic for me. Okay, F. So buff, the natural vegetation or additional landscape screening. Shall be provided by, by the zoning board of review or planning board depending upon the existing land use on the site. And the adequacy of the site's natural vegetation or lack thereof to mitigate impacts to public views. Road, scenic roads and abutters. The border review or planning board shall have the authority to set site-specific width of buffers. Heights of planted planting to require an opaque screen to adjacent properties and/or public roads. So this would just never happen. If this was, I trust that that planning board and the zoning board as the keeper of the ordinance do their job. And I don't care if a butter didn't show up. There is no doubt in my mind. That the zoning board and planning board on their own would say, that's not gonna happen here. Where we can regulate. So I appreciate it's hard to watch what goes on next door and to always be monitoring it. I am, but I don't. You know, the, the system, we have to have some things that are allowed. We have to have some things that are allowed only if you go ask and, and look. To, to hear some public comment on how it can affect us. But we have at least this ordinance very, really tried to give them the tools to do. You could have a 200 foot buffer legally under this ordinance and 30 foot trees. That's what it says. They have the right to do that. We just set minimums at 50 and all I read was 50 wasn't enough. Well, maybe 50 isn't enough, but in certain land. Where, and I'll tell you this, did anybody even know that there was a solar array at Cox Communications? It's been there 15 years. Did any of you know it existed? Most people don't. It's never had a fire, never had police. And the Chase Farm one got approved down there at the bottom of Chase Farm with, I think, no, no complaints at all. Cause it's also kind of out of sight. There's certain places in town where 50 feet may be more than adequate. And certain places in town, including Main Road, where 50 feet may not be anywhere near adequate. And this ordinance allows that flexibility. But even if nobody shows up, there's 50 feet plus 30 feet plus, and, and I get, maybe, maybe it should be more than that. But it's certainly attempted, even if you weren't paying attention, you were gonna get a minimum. That's a lot bigger and as large as all of the others we see in the state.
I have a question, Mr. Chappell. You mentioned when you started that you have a client who appeared you to draft this ordinance. Can you tell us who the client is?
Well, it was the client on the corner of Union Street and West Main Road. That's a gas station now, but um, it doesn't matter to you, but.
No, it doesn't.
But I got hired. Did a job, thought it was done. Got an attaboy, sent a bill, and six months later got a call to say, what you told me you accomplished. Isn't done because a couple, nobody's fault, just it, it's, it's interesting. Uh, and, and by the way, in the six months that this is exists, I also read that this ordinance is gonna open floodgates. There have been two applications in six months, both for small arrays. One was turned down by the zoning board. And one was granted, I understand. So I think the zoning board is listening and deciding and hearing. I, I understand there was some complaints on the one that was turned down. So I think the system may be working. Chases was already there. That came in um, af, while the first case in Jepson Lane was pending at Superior Court. It was, to my knowledge, there are no new filings under this ordinance for, I want to call them real arrays. The um, mediums or the larges. I, I'm not counting if you put them on your house, obviously, that's, I don't think that's why we're here. But, or the smaller. It didn't open up the fight, I read it was open the floodgates and, you know, 97 developers be in here by Friday and that's just not, hasn't happened. So, and, and the one that I think has raised the most concern, I don't know if they filed. I have no personal knowledge that they're gonna file, but assuming they're trying to file again, this ordinance didn't start them. They were. Erailed during the process by the lack of an ordinance a little bit. Cause there was, I was at the meeting, I wasn't participating, but there were discussions at the zoning board of. The case and whether there was an ordinance and whether we should be moving forward, waiting for an ordinance or. They could go because it was manufacturing, it was. It, it screamed for clarity, right? Whether we did it right or not is up to you, but it did scream for clarity.
Thank you, Mr. Spell. Am I muted? Or am I muted? I'm unmuted now. I keep talking and I'm muted. Mr. Spell, I just, I wanted to follow up on two points. Um, you, in addition to. What's in the ordinance, um, the special use criteria for if an application goes before the zoning board. In, in their decision, they have to address each of the special use criteria and. You know, um, those, you know, that, that has to be recorded through each application process where the applicant would have to demonstrate. The, the criteria, it's not detrimental to the surrounding area.
The A through J criteria, detrimental to the area, compatible with the neighboring uses. Not create traffic, noise or hazards. Fits with the comprehensive plan, allows uh, fire and ambulance access. I probably got seven of them, but there's nine criteria in the A through Js that are. A- as the former chairman of the planning board, you know, taken very serious, addressed one at a time. You can not only do it through layman testimony, but you may have experts to say it affects uh, my neighboring, neighboring land use or it doesn't. It's a, it's a whole nother level that the solar ordinance doesn't.
In addition to.
It's in addition to.
In addition to, so.
Residential areas, that's correct.
Right, so, so to get through a special use permit is, is it, is a pretty um, you know, sizable task. Expert testimony provided and, and I think each step of the way, it's important for, for, you know, other counselors to know. A- as well as abutters that, that are listening in tonight or interested parties that are listening in tonight. You know, the, the town has a right to, to do the peer reviews and, and get an additional level of review. So. Nothing is taken lightly. Um, I can, I think. I can only recall a couple of times where the town has gone that route, but generally these applications are, are very thoroughly vetted. I do recall the Cox petition. I, I did sit on that Cox petition some, several years ago and uh, a lot of similarities. You know, with that, with that application, you know, abutting, abutting neighbors, abutting, you know, farmlands, abutting, you know. It was also a light industrial parcel, commercial parcel. So there are some uh, there are some similarities when, when you start to look at where these. Where these lots crop up in town. Most of these lots do abut residential properties, so. It, it does cause uh, friction, but it is commercial abutting residential. It's like industrial abutting residential, so. I, I think that the ordinance does um, just at face value. From a solar perspective, the solar ordinance is actually more restrictive than other developments. That could be allowed on that parcel. 50 feet is more, I mean, in most cases it's 20 on the sides or 15 on the sides. 30 in the rear and 50, at a minimum 50 all around. It is, is an increase and it does provide, as you stated, it, it's a minimum. It does provide the boards the flexibility and authority to impose further restrictions if, if deemed necessary. So I, I do agree with you on those points. Um, but I do, I do want to hear from uh, abutters. Or interested party, I keep saying abutters. I, I want to hear from interested parties. There's no petition before us. That's, that, that's the carryover. Everybody's an interested party in a public hearing. So I, I apologize for saying abutters, interested parties. Any, before we do that, any further comments, questions from counselors?
Yeah, Mr. President?
Yes.
Um, if, then if I understand this, when a proposed solar farm is um, going before. The various boards or review of the zoning board and the planning board, any uh, a butter has the ability to appear at that hearing. And say, um, I've got a second floor deck in my house and you've got a 30 foot hedge of arbor viti or whatever. Uh, it needs to be 40 feet so that I can't see any of your panels from the top of my deck and that has to be honored, I presume.
Well, it has to be listened to. And one of the ordinances that was cited in, as a model ordinance for me to look at. By the group that I read was against it, the Hughes-Westport, and they said at ground level. And I thought ground level was short sighted because I thought ground level, when we did the Jepson Lane. There was a neighbor across the street that was concerned from seeing it from his master bedroom, which is traditionally on the second floor. We had a drone fly to his window and do sightline. And we needed a 19 foot tree in order to block uh, the land that was a little bit falling away. And the board asked us to design trees to go in excess of 20 feet. And asked us to plant in that area, I thought, I think it was 10 feet at the ball, which is a more expensive tree than a two feet at the ball. And generally, commercial ordinance says five feet at the ball, because they don't want you to plant little seedlings. But asked us to plant larger trees. Now again, that was overturned on appeal. But it does, it does suggest to me that the board can look at different heights. Now, I suppose if a person on the top of the tower said, I don't want to look at solar unless you plant a 300 foot sequoia. Probably would not hopefully get granted, but. But I think it is a reasonable measure to, and it takes, doctor, it takes out a lot of sites. Because if you're in a butter to the south, sometimes you don't have the land to do that. Because if you put a 30 foot tree to the south, you have to set those panels back 150 feet or whatever the shadow, there's a. I don't miss, I didn't mean to misquote the distances, but there, I have seen the triangles of. They, they look for sites that have exposure to the south that would not require. Uh, you know, that, that look to the water to the south or look to the parking areas to south or. Areas to the south that wouldn't require large screening because of the, the shadow.
Right, so the, 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 the planning board and the zoning board have to take these things into, into account. But if in a butter, that, you know, presents evidence that they can see over the top of the proposed barrier. The board doesn't have to honor that or they, they do?
Well, it says they shall consider it, and I think the magic is the word minimize. So as opposed to eliminate. So I have certainly seen many zoning boards say. That, you know, minimize is a reasonable and practical approach to put in 100 trees, not 600 trees. But e- everybody that gets a tree to block something. Says it's gonna be a much better buffer five years from now than it is today. So the reasonableness is, again, we. That's part of the, I, I think they design it to minimize, which means as fast as possible, eliminate all reasonable concerns. In zoning for all these years, there are some things you cannot please everyone. I, I pitched the Newport National Golf Course and I thought that that would be a fairly easy thing to pitch and there were. I I pitched the Newport National Golf Course, and I thought that that would be a fairly easy thing to pitch, and there were, in fact, a number of people that that were against that as as a neighbor, which I I understand, I guess, but it seemed like a fairly innocuous use. Sometimes I think things are going to be easy, they're really hard, and other times I think things are going to be hard that that, that, you know, things like the brewery that everybody wanted next door, for instance, you know. It 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 really depends on the neighbors and what their individual concerns are, and I think that's why it uses the word individuals. So, we live in a great place where you can stand up and say individually, this, I have concerns with this, and I get to be heard. And people get to say for the good of mankind versus the good of you, and and make those decisions for the town, and that's why we put them in that position.
But from the sound of it, nobody necessarily asked to listen to you.
Well, I I think you've got a couple of members of that, of your council that served very honorably as people on that board, and I I think it's always fair to say they don't have to, but I never have heard them not. They may not agree with you completely, but the word not listen to you would suggest that our board doesn't do their job, and if they didn't do their job, I'd be more successful than I am sometimes. So.
Mr. Spel, quick question. I think you referred to a, a, an array that was approved. Was it a ground system in a residential?
The Jepson Lane Array?
No, the, within this ordinance, you you mentioned one approval and one rejection.
I I might defer to Mike, he told me that there'd been no medium larges, but a couple of smalls. I know exactly what he's talking about on the small, because I know that it involves a municipal court, it was a a yard display that was, that the zoning board turned down. And I, I'll defer to Mike, but I believe there was a small that was approved as well. I I think by definition, I think they are residential, Keith, because they're really, it could be a commercial with.
Yeah, it's just, if there's a question, and I don't know which one it is, so I don't, I would like to answer it, but I don't know what was approved, so. And I'm gonna mess up Laurie, Lauren Zino, this is Lauren Zino, I'll find out, we'll find out and get you an answer.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay, so, I would just like, there is another question, and then I'm gonna open it up to the to the folks that are online. There's a, there's a question. Let me clarify, assuming the array across from Melville is following existing ordinance, it would be helpful to know what setbacks and vegetation requirements were determined, if anyone is present that can speak to that. Well, the the land across from Melville is exempt because it's it's Navy land. It's federal property, it did not come before the town, it does not, it's not required to come before the town.
I don't think that's what they're referring to, I think they're referring to behind, across the street, behind Cindy's.
Across the street behind Cindy's?
Which would be Mr. 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 Sheer's line.
Well, the determination for someone that was hired to do it would first be to look at the zone that it was in. So if you are in a residential zone, the first thing I would say, a solar person that came in, is we have a three-prong test. We need to file in front of the zoning board, and our standard is going to be a special use permit, which will not only includes the A through J criteria of all special use permits, but we must meet Article Ten of the new zoning requirements. Despite the fact, let's assume it was an R twenty, despite the fact it was a twenty thousand square foot with a thirty-foot front yard, thirty-foot rear, twenty-foot sides, we required at a minimum to go fifty feet in every direction, thirty feet in all of those because of the road and residential abutters, maybe not the one commercial side, if if the board didn't mandate, would have a minimum of thirty of the fifty feet, would be a vegetative buffer. To tell them you had to hire a landscape architect and go to design review, and that they had to approve the type of trees, and make sure the soil was worthy of them growing to where they were supposed to grow. They would be dictated as to the size of those trees and the staggering that would be put in. And they would be, have to testify what they would look like upon planting, and what they would look like in a reasonable short period of time, usually three years. And what would be able to see, and we normally have artist renditions of what they would see week one and what they would see week hundred. I would tell them that they otherwise had to meet all the criteria, and if they didn't want it, then they could go, and they could get organized. And there are some neighborhoods that are extremely organized, and extremely organized neighborhoods farewell at zoning hearings. And they would demonstrate what they may need, they would point out if there was special habitats for animals, or if there were any natural resources, whether this was near a pond, for instance, or a wetland. All of that would have to be done with a biologist and a Class A land surveyor. It would then go, if it is a special use permit, it would also go to the planning board, because we want consistency with what I consider planning board's expertise. That is, the same things you need when you put in, you know, surface water drainage, we don't want water falling on these that don't, that that goes into the ground differently after they're in than before, and create a downstream surface water problem. So they have to do retention ponds and areas, and if they have to take up two acres of land and can't have solar panels because they need a a detention swell, this ordinance says they have to do that, they have, they cannot build within the setbacks, but and if all the property in the middle is drainage and not solar panels, then they may only get ten panels. If they can get a hundred panels, they can get a hundred panels, and it's all very site-specific on sediment control, drainage water, view of neighbors, and those things. And if my client said, this is a project that makes sense for me, they'd probably ask my opinion. You know, there's pieces of property that I that I've been asked to to opine on, on whether or not it fits this ordinance, and have said no. Close to the road, some are, it it's not only the size, but think of whether land goes up a hill or down a hill. If it goes up a hill, an eight-foot tray doesn't do much for you if the land is sloping at a fairly steep thing. The the fact that I can't see the first four panels doesn't really change that the goal was not to see perhaps any of those panels, really site-specific as well. Topography has to be done by the engineers, they need to see full, major subdivision rules and regulations are just that. I will say, and that I have read in some of the ordinances, and I want to propose against myself, but normally both the planning board and the zoning boards require abutters to be notified. There are some ordinances that take that out, and and abutters are all are identified as two hundred feet. Well, in certain things like this, in a large area of land, that could be, and just so nobody missed it, could make it either larger than two hundred feet, or you could make it a publication like we do with a law change, because you know, I I do think that you can be two hundred and three feet away and be just as affected as the guy that's basically two hundred. And in reading a lot of the ordinances that were, that some of the comments were that I should look at, I did see that, I think it was Westport that said a thousand feet, and that's different. It would be the only one in town, and again, I don't want to go against myself, but I, it might do a little bit to satisfy some Ms. Abbott's concerns that, you know, following the paper and following your mail and worrying about being away for a week can be difficult, from a guy that lives next door to Carnegie that tended to be at the zoning board sixteen times a year. It 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 can be a full-time job, but that might help if any people have those types of concerns.
All right, we're gonna, we're gonna go to, oh, we got, oh, Mike can answer a question, okay. Where's, where's Mike?
Just to answer Keith Hamilton's question about the approval, there there was one small SES that was approved, I I believe, on Meadowlark Lane a month or two ago, so there there has been one that has been approved under this ordinance.
Yeah, and and there was one that was rejected, right?
And the one that was rejected is the one in Cedar Meadow?
Yes.
Correct.
Thank you, Mike.
So, just one question, though, both of those Meadowlark Lane and Cedar Meadow, were they for solar arrays in residential zones?
They're the small ones, so the small ones are by special use permit, that's the guy. Basically, if you have a roof that faces south and you want solar, you can put them on your roof. But if your roof doesn't face south, or if it's the front of your house and you don't want to look at it, and you have a big enough yard, you can ask to put basically the arrays that would have gone on your house as ground-mounted. And in some neighborhoods, that may be situated in a way where your neighbors aren't affected. In some neighborhoods, that may be more affected. I believe the, at least in one neighborhood, the zoning board thought that there was not enough in front of them to make the decision and rejected the petition.
And if I may step in, if I may step in, Gary Crosby?
Yeah, Mr. Crosby.
The one that, the the small solar array that was denied was a special use permit, and they basically failed to demonstrate to the board there, to the board's satisfaction that they, that they met all the A through J criteria impacts on the neighborhood and so forth. So, the system worked in that particular case, in my opinion.
Thank you, Mr. Crosby. Okay, at this time, I'd like to to now switch gears, I know Mr. Crossen's been patiently waiting. So let's, let's start with Mr. Crosson. You gotta unmute Mr. Crosson? Mr. Crosson?
I can't hear me now.
We got you now.
All right, sorry, I pressed twice. I'm wondering, Mr. President, we have two, you know, our experts, if you will, Scott Millar and Corey Pars, and I'm wondering if you would be willing to accept them, and I'll I'll go third.
Okay, just, I I I will allow you to do that, just when you come back, name an address for the clerk, I know we have here's Dave Crosson, address?
One-one-eight Sweet Farm Road.
Okay, so who did you want to go first?
Why don't we go with Scott Millar from Gross Mart, Rhode Island?
Okay. All right, let's go to Mr. Millar. Mr. Millar?
Yes, Mr. Council President, members of the Portsmouth Town Council, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Great, I'm Scott Millar, I'm the Director of the Community Assistance and Conservation for Gross Mart Rhode Island. I was a member of the Rhode Island Solar Siting Task Force. I assisted actually in preparing that so-called model ordinance that's been referenced here this evening. I've assisted Rhode Island towns to revise their solar sighting ordinance. I've conducted training sessions on solar sighting best practices. I spend, oh, probably over the last four or five years anyway, I've spent a good amount of time going out and actually looking at as-built solar developments, listening to neighbors, what their concerns are, then taking a look at the ordinance that allowed that particular development to happen. Also, I have over fifteen years as a local planning board member, so I understand the local land use process very well. I respectfully offer the following comments for the Solar Energy Systems zoning ordinance amendments, that's before you this evening. I like the statement on the purpose and intent of the ordinance as stated in Article Twenty, Section Eight, I think that's very good. This section states in part the need to minimize impacts on scenic, natural, and cultural resources. However, I didn't really see the necessary standards in this ordinance to fully achieve the town council's intent there. I understand that there are provisions in the ordinance where the planning board and the zoning board may ask for additional criteria, but it's been my experience that that puts your your local boards under a tremendous amount of pressure. It's almost if they have to negotiate, make a deal, and it puts them in an awkward position. And I guess it's, I have to respectfully agree with the authors of the ordinance. I guess I feel more comfortable with very explicit standards. That makes it more clear to the applicant, to abutting property owners, to everyone, what the standards are going to be. So it's my opinion that this ordinance has certainly potential to encourage some contentious land use conflicts between utility-scale solar energy systems and existing residential development. Other Rhode Island towns have already experienced these conflicts and have adopted solar, so solar signing ordinances to try to avoid them. The ordinance allows large solar energy systems in all residential zones as a special use with really no limits on size or lot coverage. In my opinion, this is going to encourage some very large solar energy, solar energy systems to be proposed in Portsmouth. Again, it's going to put a lot of pressure on your local boards. It's not clear the ordinance provides the standards needed for the zoning board to deny proposed large solar energy systems as a special use. I understand, I understand the A to J criteria. But in the event some applicants want to contest the zoning board's opinion on that, they can, and they will, and it's certainly happened. Some of those can be very difficult to hold up in court if they're not backed up by, again, explicit standards in the ordinance. At a minimum, if Portsmouth wishes to allow large and medium solar energy systems in residential zones, I believe it would be very prudent to establish lot coverage requirements, consider solar energy system size limits, and increase the setback in screening requirements. Many towns also include a statement on where they want to encourage solar, and also where they want to discourage solar in their town. In areas Portsmouth Portsmouth wants to encourage solar, they should be identified very clearly and allowed by right. If you really want to encourage solar, there's really no sense to have it go through what can be a very lengthy zoning board process for approval. So if you have areas where you think it's appropriate, maybe it's an old gravel bank, an old landfill, another industrial zone, allow it by right and allow the developer to maximize the development in these appropriate sites. And I want to be clear, this is not a criticism of the people who worked hard on this. Utility-scale solar is a new land use. Most municipalities didn't really have much experience with how to manage this use. I've seen several towns go back and make two to three revisions to their original solar ordinance to address unintended impacts. It's best to learn from other towns where they've accommodated a number of solar developments that they like, they feel it's working. Learn the lessons from those towns and incorporate them into your ordinance, so you can make sure it will meet Portsmouth's needs. I have a more detailed comments, I submitted in written testimony, I sent that to your town clerk today. Thank you so much for the opportunity to comment, and I just wanted to be clear, I'm not getting compensated in any way to speak to you this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mill. Okay, Mr. Crosson asked us to to then go to his next, his next presenter is Corey Lang. Do you have Mr. Lang? Okay.
Hi, I'm here.
Hey, Mr. Lang.
Thank you so much for having me. Yeah, my name my name is Corey Lang, I'm an associate professor at the University of Rhode Island. I'm an economist, I'm in the Department of Environmental and Natural Resource Economics. And I was asked to present some recent research with with you all here today. A full report can be found on the University of Rhode Island Cooperative Extension website. But what we've done is looked at property value impacts of commercial-scale solar energy across Massachusetts and Rhode Island. The reason we've looked at property values is because it is sort of a twofold reason. There's a concern about losses in equity and wealth, right? If if you lose If, if you lose property value, that, that's a direct hit to your, to your wealth and, and the equity that you have in that house. But also property values act as an indicator of preferences for a given location. And so if something is an amenity or a disamenity, that will be capitalized in a property values. And this is really the first academic study of property value impacts of commercial scale solar. And so we think it's, it's, well, it's novel and there's value in it. Um, we analyze installations across Massachusetts and Rhode Island. As I said, there's a total of 284 installations that are of size one megawatt or greater as of August 2019. And what's remarkable about these two states, right, there's a high average population density. And so that, you know, which is one reason why solar is so contentious, uh, because there's a lot of, uh, interaction, a lot of interfacing between residential areas and, and solar. But what that makes for is a lot of data, right? So we have a lot of transactions we observe within three miles of these solar installations. And so that's to our advantage that we're able to get really precise estimates. Um, we develop a mathematical model that compares properties before construction to after construction and properties that are close to an installation, uh, relative to those that are a little further away. Okay, it's a powerful mathematical model. Uh, it's often used in these types of capitalization studies. And what we find on average is that properties within a mile of a utility scale solar installation decline by 1.7% relative to the pre-construction time period and relative to those properties that are a little further away. So 1.7% decline is sort of the average effect that we find. What does that mean in terms of a loss of value? Well, that's about when we multiply that by the average property value, that comes to about a $5,700 loss in value, uh, for those nearby properties. We also spent some time looking at heterogeneity, right? As I said, that was sort of an average effect, the 1.7%. One thing we look for is proximity, right? And houses within point one mile are impacted more. We find a point estimate of about 7%. Uh, so larger there. We also study rural versus non-rural areas. Um, and we find that non-rural areas are impacted more than rural areas. Uh, so these are places where we were thinking that land is more scarce. And, and so if you, you know, solar in a non-rural area leads to a larger impact than, than in a rural one. We also find that houses in non-rural areas surrounding solar that's built on farm and forest land are impacted most. So again, the idea of scarcity in a non-rural area, there's not a lot of farm and not a lot of forest. And this is where we see the largest impacts on, um, on housing prices. That's the, the brief summary of what we found, uh, very cursory. But, uh, as I said, the full report is on the URI Cooperative Extension website where all the details can be found.
Thank you, Mr. Lang.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, let's go.
Um, over how long a period did you do this study?
That's a good question. So we use housing data, uh, housing transactions that range from 2005 to 2019.
Okay, and did you, so that's over multiple tax evaluations. So did you purely use the sales or did you use valuation?
We used sales. Arms-length transactions, uh, were what we used in our, uh, final sample.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. George.
Um, Mr. President, I have a question. Um, did you take account of the mitigating effect of appropriate visual buffers?
That's a very good question, and a question I get a lot. Uh, no, we did not. So this was, you might describe this as a macro level study in the sense that it's sort of at a 10,000-foot view. And because we had so many sites across two states, we don't have all the details, right? So we don't have information on whether or not there was a visual buffer. We don't have information on setback. There's a lot of, um, yeah, these, these details that a lot of people care about, we don't have, and that's unfortunate. But at the, you know, the benefit, the upside is that we have so many sites. We have so much data. Those 400,000 transactions are a big upside. And so as a result, we're getting an average effect. And so, you know, those numbers I presented are averages across sites that do have buffers or don't have buffers or are visual or not visual. And at the moment, that, that's the best we can do.
Mr. President, I also have a question. You did the study, uh, usually when there's solar farm development being done, there's often other construction being done as well. Did the study control for the effect of other industrial and non-industrial construction in those areas where housing prices were being affected?
Um, I mean, the short answer is no. Um, you know, the, the sites I'm familiar with, there's, there's not always other construction going on. It can be an isolated, um, project. We are controlling, so if it's, you know, right next to it, no. If it's in the surrounding area, if it's at the town level, then our control group, which is houses one to three miles away from the construction, should, uh, should control for that. But if there's some other undesirable land use happening that is constructed at the exact same time as a solar installation, then that could be a confounding factor.
Thank you.
One other question. Uh, I was wondering, uh, sorry, it did, so you essentially said that in rural areas, um, that there were basically no effects on property values. Is that right?
That is what our, excuse me, that is what our estimates suggest is that the negative impacts are concentrated in non-rural areas. And I say non-rural, that's a little awkward. I don't want to say rural versus urban, because there aren't that many installations in urban areas. So it's more rural versus suburban. And, yeah, we find that the, there are, the negative results are really being driven by those non-rural areas.
Thank you.
I make just one comment.
Uh, Mr. Shebel, yeah.
Yeah, I, I, I'm not trying to cross-examine anybody, and I understand it. But I've been at these hearings where neighbors and people both bring experts and there are varying opinions on this. And all of the decisions, discussions seem to be, and he used his words very carefully about the pre-construction site. I think if I lived next to a 10-acre field, then I would have the opinion that my house value and that. But don't you also have to look at what it could be? And if I build a Budweiser bottling plant as a matter of right on the light industry piece on West Main Road, does that affect the market more over 1.7? And I think it is ridiculous to think that when Target was going in on the corner of Union Street, that people would have thought that Target would have been less of an impact allowable by special use permit than a solar farm would. So it's not just pre-construction on a field. And I think that's why you have, they can hear experts on both sides and give the opportunity to ask questions and then make a decision. And, you know, I, I get it, but I, I've certainly heard some things to, to the contrary. And in Portsmouth, unfortunately, I think there, I don't know of an industrial piece of land that doesn't in but, but a residential. We don't have this 2020 view of if we had 100 acres and we had our town planner put the industrial over here and the commercial over here and the residential. We are spotted. And if you look at the light industry pieces behind Mr. Scher's piece, quite frankly, you know, that might be a great place to change the zone of that. It might not be a good place for a light industry zone. But that's not the same as saying we have a bad solar ordinance. It might be a good way to say this particular piece isn't a good place for solar after we hear from all the neighbors and all the experts. But I don't think it's a reason to change your solar ordinance. It's designed to sort this out. I think there's a lot of reasons and, and again, I, a lot of this, the, nobody was, a lot of these people weren't there. But your planning board discussed and, and your planner and, and, and zoning officer discussed these studies, the effect, where it would be in residential. Uh, for instance, the Jepson Lane Residential for you guys, that is an interesting piece of property, because that is rural residential over there in South, um, you know, in, in South Portsmouth over on, uh, on Jepson Lane. But you have to remember, the owner also owned the Jepson Lane Apartments. So his choices were to continue the low-to-moderate income housing, which is allowed as a matter of right, superzoning. And there were neighbors that objected. You know, I don't criticize any of them for doing that. But there were also neighbors that came in and pled to allow that, because they thought that it was better development and would affect their property less. And they're both intelligent, right? Arguments. There was an argument that each of them made. And that's what your zoning boards and your planning boards are for. They have to listen to it. They have to sort it out. And if they can't do it, they shouldn't be there. But it certainly is not my opinion that they can't do it.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Shebel. Um, I, I'd like to go back to.
Right, I ask a quick question.
Yep, Mr. Captain.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, and thank you, Professor Lang, for your, your work on this. Uh, the question I had was sort of just asked by, by, uh, Mr. Chappelle, but the study you did, I'm, I'm assuming without, without reading all 40-something pages of it, the study was of solar installations built where nothing existed before it. It wasn't, you know, demolition of some industrial site replacing with, uh, solar property, but rather going from rural fields or forest or something undeveloped to, uh, solar installations. Is that a reasonable assumption on my part? That the majority of solar installations you studied relating to their impact on housing prices was, were installations going from, uh, open land to developed land?
It's partially right. Um, and so we, we did have two types of site. We made a, uh, distinction between two types of sites, green, greenfield and non-greenfield. And a greenfield, as you're right, are farms and forest land where there was nothing there before, except farmland and forests, right? And in the non-greenfield was brownfields, covered landfills, um, commercial areas, commercial rooftops. And so that, those were pre-developed, um, and, and couldn't be or were limited in what they could be developed in, you know? But solar is one option with those already compromised properties. And, and so we do have both of those in the data.
Thank you.
Okay. I, I know we have some questions and we, that are being submitted online. Um, but I, I'd like to just go back to, to Mr. Crossman here, because, uh, we started with him.
But, Mr. President, though, I think the, the three questions that are specifically up there, give the Lang's testimony. Um, you know, one is, I'm assuming one mile.
Rose up on, Mr. Hamilton.
I'm assuming it's one mile is a crow fly, Mr. Lang's research.
That's correct.
Uh, and the overall with rural or non-rural?
I'm sorry, you, you're freezing up. I didn't hear your question.
Would you consider Portsmouth rural, rural, rural?
Um, be honest, I don't know. You know, we made that distinction based on population density. And, you know, I would take these results as suggestive, not as, oh, this town is definitely rural or definitely non-rural. These will definitely be the impacts. Um, a more, there were, but I don't know what Portsmouth's population did since and where.
Yeah. So you didn't include Portsmouth in your studies?
Um, to be, if there was a, I can quickly look at the map to see if I can kind of gauge it. Um, you know, it's kind of a loose map, but it looks like we might have one site that's in Portsmouth. That's one megawatt or greater. But I can't say for certain. This is just based on a map that, of course, I can't say for certain whether Portsmouth was included or not.
Okay, but based on, so, but based on your numbers, we would have seen or should have seen a 1.7% decrease in the property is within one mile of that array.
Well, that is an average across those 284 sites. Um, it may occur everywhere, but that's an average of what we're seeing. And so I wouldn't, uh, be such as, I wouldn't make such a strong claim that it definitely happened at this site in Portsmouth. It's, it's an average across all the sites.
I'm pretty sure that the residents who live there wouldn't make claims their home values have gone up, prices have gone up. And I would very guess the prices have gone up as well in those areas.
I don't know. I mean, what this is, uh, the, the, the effects we're finding are relative changes. And so it could be that home prices do go up, but they go up less than properties a little further away.
Which in Ireland, that's only three miles wide, is reflective of water views and non-views and the other things, not just the fact that they live within a mile of a potential, um, summer.
Yeah, there are specifics to Portsmouth that, and in any community, that may not be reflected here. This is an average across 284 sites, may not reflect one site.
Okay, Professor.
Okay, so did, so we've addressed the comments. Let's go back to Mr. Cross. Mr. Cross.
Can you hear me?
We got you.
Okay, uh, Mr. President, members of the council, first, I want to thank you for hearing Scott and Corey. Um, you know, anytime we're looking at something this important, I think it's important to have data, uh, to have expert opinion. And, and I appreciate you hearing them. Um, you know, I think this is all in the context of what a public hearing should be. Uh, tonight's hearing brings to mind a favorite quote of mine from Justice Louis Brandeis. Quote, "In the frank expression of conflicting opinions lies the greatest promise of wisdom in government action." Uh, the premise of Justice Brandeis's statement underscores the importance of opposing views to inform and craft laws and ordinances for every resident. In this case, tonight, we all rise and raise our voice regarding the solar ordinance. Now Portsmouth has always been a leader in alternative energy. You heard it earlier. And we have learned from other projects, the unintended impacts that will live with the butters for decades. Portsmouth as well has been a center for solar opposition. Portsmouth Solar's 2.9 megawatt proposal off Jepson Lane and the Kearsarge Energy's 4.8 megawatt proposal off West Main Road were both ultimately denied. That opposition was very public. It strikes me that for the better part of the last year, an ordinance has been created without, quote, frank expression and conflicting opinions, end quote. That neither this council nor the zoning board sought input on the ordinance from a broader group of residents that they were aware of. I'm also concerned that this deliberative body did not think odd when there was no true conflicting opinion on May 11. Now, we're all here today because Judge Brian Van Cugan believed the town council and not a quasi-judicial administrative body known as supports my zoning board must designate zoning uses subject to special use permits. And believe you may. And believe you may, that is a good thing. I, like most on this conference, support alternative energy. Do not oppose the citing of alternative energy in Portsmouth. But I strongly oppose the ordinance as written. It is the absolute bare minimum standard in a town that braces scenic vistas and rural character. And it fails in every regard in being consistent with the draft comprehensive plan. I ask that you remand this ordinance back to the zoning board or a subcommittee of your making. Forming a time limited, and again, I'll emphasize time limited, citizen driven committee. That can bring back a better ordinance before it's too late. Where this ordinance approves, I disagree with Attorney Chappelle. Developers throughout the Northeast will converge on Portsmouth. The intended protections on farmlands will end. And will turn any lot with appropriate setbacks into industrial eyesores for decades, 25 years by testimony. While much has been written about large solar arrays, the small and medium arrays. Up to greater than four times the footprint of Clement's Market may be our biggest. Source of impact, negative impact. While many here are concerned of their properties and their vistas. I raise a clarion call that anywhere you see a farm, anywhere you see a lot, tomorrow could you could be looking at 12-foot solar panels. A counselor is quoted that a special use process provides the opportunity for redress. Attorney Chappelle said the same earlier, but it really does not. To quote James Hall, a prominent appraiser from Portsmouth, who is unable to attend tonight because he has not had another planning board hearing. Quote, "The standard of a special use permit only sets a very low bar. That with minimal testimony would be difficult for the zoning board to deny." And having served on a planning board in Hanover, Mass., I would agree. As I stated earlier, I'm not in opposition. We need to do better. We need to work together to address buffer setback and density in a way that serves this town. And you know what? I think Attorney Chappelle made our case. That there are so many elements to this. When Dr. Ryan asked if he looked out his second floor window, what would happen? It's a big maybe. I don't think residents want to leave to chance that maybe. I think there are examples. East and west, north and south through Portsmouth. Of developers that have overplayed their hand and have not been stopped. We can have an ordinance that protects the butters, our viewscapes and the density of arrays while allowing this development. Let me close with a, an example of a wise man, and I wish I had come up with this example. But Slocum Road is a high-end residential development abutting East Main Road. It sits between Seventy Field and Sandy Point Road. And you'd never know it was there. There's a vegetative berm that's probably sits about six feet high with six to eight foot plantings on it. This is the type of creativity we need in our ordinance. And we're not asking for this ordinance not ultimately to be passed. We're asking that it be passed appropriately. As the ordinance is written, we will rapidly be back in front of this body asking, how did this happen? Please mark my words. I know each of you, to be good citizens, want the best for Portsmouth. But please understand that rushing this ordinance for a few will be very costly to your constituents as a whole. I pledge my support to assist in the development of a better ordinance. And to speak to Dr. Ryan. And Danielle Abbott, the reality is. It doesn't take much for us as a community to fix this and get it back on track so that we can all live in harmony. And that while I'm not directly abutting property that has been raised a couple of times across from Melville. On West Main Road, I have neighbors that do. And quite frankly, I'm about to lose those neighbors if this 50-foot buffer is not changed. So I thank you and I I thank you for holding this hearing and hearing us. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Cross. I I do, I know I will go to a few others that have been online. I just want, there is a comment here. I'm assuming it. The vegetated buffer are a concern at 30 feet. I would like to see a no cut zone at least 75 feet out of property lines. I think it's more of a statement than a than a question that required an answer. Um, and again, I think that's something that is being discussed tonight. Before the council. I would like to go to Mr. Sherrod. I believe Mr. Sherrod was next. I could be wrong. Nelson.
It was James Sherrod. I think he must have put his hand down.
Okay, so then I I just know who's back.
Hi, can you guys hear me?
We got you, Mr. Sherrod.
Uh, my name's James Sherrod, 101 Benjamin Drive in Portsmouth. I just, uh, I I just had a few comments. I I'm not going to reiterate a lot of the items that I've heard before. Um, the the big takeaway that I think is that I think that. I would agree with, uh, Mr. Millar, uh, with Grossmar. In that I think that there's a, this is a well-written ordinance. I I think that it's well. I think there was a lot of time put in and, um. You know, I appreciate the work put in by by the members of the community and by Mr. Chappelle. I also think that there's an opportunity to improve it. In particular, I think the, that I, I think the. The vegetation in the screening is really my 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 only concern. And I, what Mr. Crossden stated, I would kind of mirror that, that I think that there's ways that we can build this to meet the needs of the community. And and push solar and allow these. Particularly, the the ones I think that I feel strongly about are an earth berm. Uh, that that Mr. Crossden mentioned between, um, Sandy Point. And, um, Seventy Field. You you would never know that's there because the earth berm is there. It's elevated. And in addition, there's a double row of of screening. I believe they use evergreens or arborvitae's. I can't recall. But I think by by increasing the. I guess by making it more of a standard and not subjective, the way the ordinance is written right now is that I think it had, um, opaque. Or or just had a vegetative buffer. The only preference I'd have is that if it was a little bit more prescriptive on an earth berm or requirement for for the, um. Double row of some sort of screening. And then lastly, I think the only other opportunity for improvement would be in the, um. I believe page seven, which is the operating standards. I'd like to see an opportunity somewhere in there that there's a a requirement to to maintain the vegetative buffer or the screening. Um, it it seems kind of something that's a requirement on the initial installation. If there's damage, damage or degradation, um, the the applicants are, there is no more screening. I think there should be a requirement by the, um, the applicant to maintain that. And that was my only comments. Appreciate your time.
Anybody, Mr. Sherrod?
My comment briefly on that?
Uh, yeah.
First, thank you because it was spoken as a true gentleman and. I promised Mr. Rayner I wouldn't get upset when people talked about my order. Appreciate those comments. Um, I will say that the bond that is for, um, maintaining. Says in this that, uh, it includes the maintenance. So it is, there is a maintenance plan that must be filed and approved by the board. And that includes the maintenance of not only the system itself, but the buffer in a way that's designed to protect it. And a bond to, um, to help it. The berm is something that clearly in front of a board, everybody could, uh. Could ask for and clearly as written, I believe the zoning board or the planning board could do it. In some cases, especially where he's talking about on Sandy Point, that's a great berm, but that's not a surface water runoff area. In other cases, when you berm, you change the surface water runoff and you may. Cause some flooding somewhere else. So that's part of the surface water contour plan. But certainly berms, um, can make a six-foot planting start at eight feet and that's a good thing. So it it's not that you can't have a berm, but I would leave it up to the board to listen to experts on. Whether specific berms in certain areas can be done to maximize screening and not have a negative effect on. Whenever you block water from somebody, you give it to somebody else. Um, and the nice thing about solar panels is we don't generally, when we just put them on top of fields as they exist. We don't change the sheet flow of water. And because we're not changing the sheet flow of water, that's, for those of you that. Keith and Kevin especially, that is oftentimes 80% of our hearings at some of these contested cases. And if you remember Clement's Market, for instance, I mean, surface water is just an issue with development. And these are one of those developments that don't always have that. So I just. I appreciate the berm. I think in the right spot, they're great, but worry about that too. And that's why the planning board with their expertise would be able to comment on that. But I do thank him for his comments.
Um, I I think, was it Shelley, Shelley and Terrence Nicholas? Hello? The Sherry and Terrence Nicholas?
Yes, thank you so much. Can you hear me?
Uh, yes, name and address, please, for the for the gentleman.
Excellent. Thank you. Shelley Nicholas. Um, Terrence Nicholas is with me as well. We're at 59 Mary Road Drive. So thank you to the council members who, um, took the time to read my email concerning this matter over the weekend. And particular, thank you to those of you who took the time to thoughtfully respond. I appreciate your time. Mr. Chappelle highlighted opportunities for residents to affect individual solar energy system design at zoning and planning meetings. However, my concern is that if properties meet the minimum requirements outlined in the ordinance. Any application will go through as is unless residents show up to every single meeting to voice concerns and make cases regarding impact. This seems unduly burdensome to residents who want to see limited density and larger buffers overall to maintain Portsmouth overall character. In doing research to assess and better understand our ordinance, I came to the realization that there are good ordinances and bad ordinances. And yes, defining an ordinance as good or bad is highly subjective depending on who you are and where your interests lie. Realistically, I think we can balance developer needs or developer want with residents' concerns. And I think this goes back to a lot of the things. I I echo a lot of my neighbors', um, concerns and what they've shared regarding density. Um, and regarding screening. And I think this needs to go back for further review so that there can be balance again with developer needs and resident concerns.
Hi, this is, uh, Terrence Nicholas, uh, again at 59 Mary Rose Drive. Um, thank you to the council for holding this hearing tonight. Um. My my one comment would be, I I just to, um. Ask the council, um, to take another look at this ordinance based upon everything that's been presented tonight. Um, I. I it, I would ask that the council acting in the interest of, uh, the the residents, particularly those. Who are directly impacted by, um, the proposed, uh, site. Um, that is, uh, off of, um, West Main Road and abuts the, um, neighborhood of, uh, both Mary Rose Drive and Sweet Farm. Um, to just consider, um, a lot of the things that have been talked about and look at the the ordinance to see. How, uh, it could perhaps be better representative of the residents. Thank you very much.
Thank you. But is, I don't, I don't know, Mr. Fitzmaurice was online. Is he still?
He, uh, I think I put his hand down on stage, so.
Mr. Fitzmaurice?
Yes, Mr. President, thank you.
Okay.
I'm Larry Fitzmaurice of 50 Kristen Court. Um, on behalf of the Portsmouth Concerned Citizens, I'd like to oppose this ordinance in its current form. I think it's, uh, obvious that we need an ordinance for solar farms, but we don't like the form of this one. Um, the solar ordinance will likely result, in our view, in a complete change in the appearance of Portsmouth. Many of our citizens like where they live in large part because rather open space. That we have in, in obviously in places in town. So it's, it's a very positive aspect to the town. And I find a lot of people are very concerned about losing that general appearance and others have spoken to that. But where we had farms and open spaces, we appear to be headed into. A period in which we're going to have at least some, and I would suggest a lot. Of, uh, solar farms, which are essentially industrial sites. I don't think that's a fair assessment to say that they're the same thing as a farm. It is a different thing. Um, the substantial change in Portsmouth policy, and I suggest that it is. Has been done without the people's involvement. Nobody's been had, asked to have a general discussion about this and. And nobody was formed, uh, into a committee to take a look at it from the people's point of view. I think that's clearly missing in this process. And the council has an opportunity to return and make that change and make that involvement. And I would strongly advise they do so. It also breaks faith, this ordinance and its approach, talking about its specific approach here. With the faith of the taxpayers who have paid for many years taxes into open space funding. In the budget, many years at $250,000 a year. And who also voted in support of a $4 million open space and recreation bond 2007. We all know that the council has also, in addition. Joined organizations like Quitting Land Trust and others to purchase open spaces. So we seem to be taking a complete turn away from that. And, uh, I think that's an important decision and one everybody needs to be participating, participating in. This ordinance continues also the recent, in my opinion, years. Of the trend of zoning code decline for residential zoning. This is a big step. This permit, this ordinance permits solar farms on all residential property lots. Large enough to support the system with its setbacks and so on and so forth. Uh, mostly means that we're talking about large and medium-sized solar energy facilities. They should be prohibited on residential properties. Because, you know, once you start putting these things into residential properties and this zoning code proposal. On a, uh, or marked as S. Um, you know, you have to get a permit approved by the zoning board review. But that's a possibility. It remains a possibility in all of these facilities. Anywhere where there's a spot big enough to put. And I don't think that that's an effective use or management of the zoning code in this town. The ordinance, we believe, should prohibit solar farms on any of the residentially zoned properties. Period. That would deal with a lot of the problems people see with this thing. There's also. A wide open ordinance. This is going to be a wide open ordinance that does not provide for a number of things other communities, communities. Typically require. The privacy screen, we've talked about a great deal. It's the vegetative barrier or border. And but the actual trees are not finding any of this that I could see. It's an option for the zoning board review. There doesn't seem to be any reason for not just requiring a privacy screen. And we've had some definitions about how that privacy screen should be determined, and I think that those are instructive. But why have it where you don't necessarily have to have a berry of trees? Between any residential property, zone property and any major highway going through the town. I think that's a, something that needs to be added.
Mr. Fitzmaurice, I think you're getting off track a little bit here.
Well, I'm I'm speaking to the. Well, I'm, I'm speaking to the issues here before us, and that's the zoning changes. I mean, the zoning ordinance here. And I'm reading from, from the parts that I've looked at. And, and frankly, I'm supposed to get a chance to say something here, and I'm nearly done. As you have a tendency to do, you interrupt me right at the end. So at any rate, let me make the last point. And that is, the zoning code for this ordinance should include an requirement that the petitioner have notified all abutters as ever it's defined before the zoning board review can hear his petition. So those are my recommendations. Thank you.
Okay. Let's just answer this question real quick. Who drafted this current ordinance? Well, I think it's, it's been a compilation of town planner, assistant town planner.
Assistant town planner, town prosecutor, town solicitor, and state.
Town solicitor, the assistant town prosecutor, and also looking at this, the state model ordinance with the solar. So there's.
And there's other ordinances around the state.
Right. There's, there's been a lot of, a lot of effort into the crafting of this ordinance, being blended from a sample ordinance as well as other ordinances that currently exist. Let's go to, I'm just going to go down around, around here. Stephen? Hello?
Hi, good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for having me. I just want to make a few comments. So much has already been said.
Okay, name, name and address, please.
Steven Luce in Middletown.
Okay.
Address, please, sir.
Oh, exact address, two Maple Terrace, Middletown.
Thank you.
All right. So thank you, Council, for bringing this issue back up again. Basically, solar arrays are a new issue for Portsmouth. And they can be a very long-term issue, twenty-five plus years, with the various consequences. And the issue encompasses the entire town. It's not a bad idea, of course, because the goal of the ordinance, the intent, as Mr. Chappelle put in there, is, you know, it's great, is to reduce fossil fuel use. Unfortunately, that goal is not at all achieved when the solar array comes at the expense of vegetation, of chopping down trees, of destroying a mature woodland. Mr. Chappelle offered a great suggestion that maybe just the zoning of certain lots, like that lot behind Cindy's, you know, may solve that particular lots issue. But just so, it doesn't have to be dealt, you know, lot by lot. You know, perhaps something like that could be added to the ordinance. And since this definitely seems to be an ordinance that a lot of attention, a lot of interest, perhaps, you know, some more studies, some more focus groups could get together and, and look at it in a little more depth. Okay, that's a basic all I need to say for now. I appreciate it. Appreciate the time.
Thank you, Stephen. Let's go down. We have David Fontaine.
Yes, thank you. Can you all hear me?
Yes, name and address, please.
David Fontaine, fifty-eight Mariel Rose Drive. Thank you very much. It, it was nice to hear so many different sides and hear from experts as well. It, it appears very clear that there's quite a bit of ambiguity or subjectivity in this ordinance for the zoning board. So what I'd like to see is just a little bit more clarity so that we can remove the subjectivity and, and just have the kind of clarity that'll, that'll make it easier for, for every Portsmouth resident. So I, I'm thinking we, community, we as a community can do better with this. So I'm asking that we, we send this back, we all begin to contribute, and I am certainly willing to chip in and do my part to help Portsmouth continue to grow and be the best place to live. Thank you.
Hey, Fontaine. I'm going to just go, Robin?
Hello, um, thank you so much for hearing us.
Name and address, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. Robin Yonkin, forty-nine West Passage Drive. Thank you for taking the time to listen to our concerns. I'm also thankful for Scott Millar's thoughtful commentary because he points out something that I think is important, and that is that we need to have a good ordinance in place and not put the burden on a butters so that every time something comes up, abutters have to protest or, or go to these meetings, fight for their rights, especially with these large companies that are rather aggressive in what they want to do. I think that we would all have a great peace of mind if we didn't have to worry about that. And I'll let my neighbors and the other residents speak to solar issues such as, you know, vegetation, screening, runoff, environmental impact, the property value, value decline, safety, lot coverage, size limits, the longevity of the arrays. But, um, like so many of my neighbors and just people everywhere, I'm a victim of COVID, too. For COVID, too, because in May, a meeting was held about the ordinance, I was still trying to figure out how to go grocery shopping without catching a disease. But as a resident of Portsmouth's West Side, when I finally got out of my house, I was alarmed at the way our town has suddenly become invaded by solar, especially near my hilltop neighborhood. And within a short time, if the town council doesn't act, if the ordinance isn't reviewed again, and act on behalf of our home, our, the homeowners in my neighborhood and throughout Portsmouth, I'm afraid that we're going to find ourselves surrounded by one array after another. I realized that the town council could do nothing to stop the terrible eyesore that has sprung up on the Navy-owned lands near Melville. But that development and what has happened there is a warning to all of us. With the recent solar ordinance, we will soon see others chopping down acres of trees to plant solar farms. And I use that word sarcastically and ironically because there's nothing farm-like about those hideous structures of metal and glass. And I cannot twist my logic enough to accept that something that's called green energy depends on the remote removal of those real green structures. You know, those things called trees. You may think I'm speaking out merely because I do not want solar farms in my backyard. And I won't lie, that is one of my considerations. I don't want to look out my window, drive through my neighborhood, or see my town overrun by thoughtless expansion. I don't want my property values to suffer, and I don't want solar panels in my neighborhood, and I don't want them in yours either, or anyone's in Portsmouth. I think that I have nothing against alternative energy, but solar panels should go in appropriate places, not in areas bordered by residential properties or along main roads. And if we do not act now, I think that those traveling down West Main Road will be greeted by one long stretch of ugly commercial buildings and acres of solar panels that do nothing to preserve the charm of our town. I've often felt proud of Portsmouth when people from other locations commented on the loveliness of our community. However, I feel fear that the rural character and appeal of Portsmouth will soon be a thing of the past if we do not do something now. Finally, I'd like to remind you of the Comprehensive Planned Land Use Vision, which states, "The landscape of Portsmouth will present an orderly, balanced, and rational development pattern that helps preserve community character, enhance physical stability, and protect the quality of the natural environment." And as town officials, I hope you take that vision to heart. You have the power to act prudently on what our town will look like in the future. You represent the wishes of those of us who live here and make Portsmouth our home. So I ask you to do the right thing, and please reconsider the ordinance passed on solar arrays. Thank you for listening to me.
Okay, I'm just going to go right down the list. Bruce, Bruce Faye?
Oh, hi, can you hear me?
Yep, I name and address.
Oh, yeah, it's Bruce Faye, and it's eighty-four Sweet Farm Road. And I, I just had some, really three major, major comments. One is, and this is sort of to set the record straight, the last time a solar farm was proposed, excuse me, for Mr. Shear's property, while the minutes of the meetings may say that, that it was, the, the request was denied because it wasn't part of the, you know, the big plan or it wasn't an ordinance. In fact, what the developer actually did is he misrepresented what it really was in terms of density. And, and it wasn't even a math problem. It was simple arithmetic that the residents found in the, in the proposal, no other boards found. So the, and he, he used land that he hadn't, wasn't actually leasing. So that's really what happened. It was misrepresented to be one thing. Had it passed, it would have been something else. So I think that's a very important consideration here. The, the, the next thing I wanted to talk, talk about just briefly is I spent a great part of my career writing rules for a living. And the, the, the reality of life is, if, if you do not write a rule the way you really want it enforced, you, you don't have a right to expect that it'll be enforced the way you want it. So when we say things like, this is the minimum, and, and I have a lot of confidence in the, in the zoning and planning boards, by the way, it still opens them up to, to, to pressure trying to interpret, well, should they, should they go more than the minimum because the developer's going to come back like, like the previous people did and say, well, you, you gotta let me put all those collectors in there, those panels, because I, I, it won't be effective. Well, that puts a lot of pressure on the board. Therefore, I don't believe, and I've never believed, that fifty-foot setback is, is, is adequate at all. It ought to be at least a hundred. And, and we ought to spell out what the vegetation is. The, the previous developers said they were going to let grass grow there, or grass was not going to help the runoff. The thing that absorbs the water are the trees. So what I would say is, the, the ordinance is, has a, is a tremendous draft. It's, it's got a, it's an excellent start, but it is incomplete, especially when it comes to the minimums required. And, and, and it has been said several times, this thing has to stand the test of time. So you, you kind of got to get it right the first time. So I would suggest that, that this get a thorough review by people, and, and I, I don't speak just as, as a butter in this case. This applies to, to, to the town of Portsmouth. So it should be our, as in the town of Portsmouth's ordinance, and it, and it should benefit the, the, the good of the town. Not the good of any developers, none of that nonsense, but the good of the town. I also believe that, that solar is a good thing. So we have to, I think, do a better job of, of integrating solar into the, into the plan and into the ordinance. The last, the last thing I would like to say is, one, one of my, one of my big concerns is that a lot of that area behind my property and as we go down, years ago, was a junkyard. And when, when I was building my house and several others were being built in here thirty-three years ago, we found a lot of interesting stuff, like large truck transmissions that were leaking fluid, that had been there forever, truck rear ends, whole axle assemblies. There was tons of stuff. What would concern me is, is what toxins could be in the ground and would they or would they not be disturbed when they start driving piles or laying concrete blocks to support these, these panels? And I would be concerned about the potential environmental impact based on the fact that we don't know for sure what's in the ground. In any event, that, that, that encompasses my comments for tonight. And I certainly appreciate you listening to us, and I don't mean to demean, to demean any of the work put in by anyone on the ordinance. I just believe it needs to be more resident-centric. Thank you very much.
Okay, Mr. Faye?
Hello, there's Louis Latendra. Can you hear me okay?
We just need your name and address.
Yes.
We need your name, we need your address.
Yes, Louis Latendra, ninety-four Sweet Farm Road, Portsmouth, Rhode Island. Bruce Faye and I are neighbors. He just spoke a minute ago. And many of the things that Bruce brought up is the same way that I feel. We do support green energy. And we just think that this, this proposal really needs a little, a few changes. But first of all, I wanted to say thank you to the people from the town for letting us speak tonight. I think, you know, this last eight months has been tough on everybody, and I, I don't think that we were heard the way we should have been, but I don't think it was anybody's fault. But, so thank you for hearing us tonight. And I also wanted to thank Scott Millar, who I thought did a pretty nice job, and Corey also for speaking. And they, they brought to light a lot of important things. And, of course, Chappelle, you, you are a great attorney, I, I can tell, and obviously a very bright man. You, you brought up so many things that I had never thought about. What goes into all of having, building a solar farm. But, uh, so many of the things that Bruce said are the same concerns that I have. There are setbacks, no cut buffers, density. Those are very important to me. Also, no cut zones. I, I think we're looking at trees right now to look at. Solar panels doesn't excite me. I, I also wonder about the runoff. Like Bruce said, there's, there's all kinds of funny parts in, in the back there, in the backyard. I also think about coyotes, you know, I, I don't know where they're going to go, you know, I haven't heard too much about them. But those are some of my thoughts, and I hope that it will give us a chance to, to redo this thing and add to it, correct it. And I thank you for hearing me tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Latendra. Let's go down to Ken McGinley?
Jen is using older version Zoom. So she, I don't care who would have to promote her to a panel. Allow her to speak. Or she could, she could call.
Yeah, can you do that? And we'll just take her off analyst later?
Okay, yes.
Jen, we're, we're coming to you, Jen, just hang in there. You've got an older version of Zoom.
Hi, this is Tom and Jen McGinley. Can you hear us? Okay?
We can see you. That's why she bailed on you?
All right.
I just need your address.
Yeah, it's nineteen Chelsea Drive.
Okay.
Okay, I just wanted to add my voice to the others in saying that I think this ordinance maybe needs a little more work to be a little more, to offer some more protections for residents. There was a lot of talk earlier about the special use process and some of the protections that that offers, but I think if, if I read this correctly, for something in a light industrial area, that does not apply. So if you're in a residential area. So if you're in a residential area, next to that, you don't get the benefit of a lot of those protections. Uh, so I think I'd like to see some, some beefing up of some of the, some of the, uh, some of the things that we could put in here, such as no cut zones, larger buffers, something that hasn't been talked about is, is maybe limiting the density and offering a higher le- amount of density if the developer's willing to work with the butters to make sure things are screened properly. Um, so I just wanted to, to add my voice to the others in saying that I think, uh, we need to take another look at this and, uh, make some modifications. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. McGinley.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, there we go. Can I go to Mark? Hello?
Hi. Um, I just wanted to-
Na- name and address, please?
Mark Rogers, seventy-three West Passage Drive. Um, I have a very small farm over here over by Hilltop, and I just wanted to let you know that the developers are relentless to get land, anything that is available, they will call, they will tend to. And I think that, once it starts and the ball gets rolling, that this is gonna be really hard to reel in. It's better to start before the horse gets out of the barn, to start ahead and be ready for it, because you can see open exeter and tibetan other areas in Nevada that have been integrated by solar farms. And every conceivable piece of property that they can, that they will try to get, it's subsidized, it's profitable. And I know that it adds tax to the, to the payroll for the town, but there's value in open space. There's value in keeping state not full of industry. And that's why the town has remained like a place that people wanna come. I have a new neighbor that moved in next quarter to me from California, and I didn't have the heart to ask them to go to this meeting. Because how do you tell people that think they've come to a beautiful town that, surprise, maybe in a year, you're gonna look out your window and see solar? How do you tell people that? So I think there's other things to consider other than hiding it and taxes that it brings in. There's value in keeping something beautiful. And-
Could we just get your name again? We, we had a tough time with that.
It's Mark Rogers.
Okay.
Seventy-three West Passage Drive.
West Passage Drive.
And I did wanna thank you for, um, listening to everybody and understanding this situation and hopefully revisiting it and making it a, a little bit better than it is. Some towns have done this, they're on their eighth ordinance, they've rebuilt it and rebuilt it to make it better. And that's no criticism of what it is, it's just, I think that with so many people wanting it to be better than for it to be not left up to the discussion of later, it really helps. So thank you.
Okay, and then, uh, Glenn and Lisa Steely?
Uh, Glenn Steely, forty Sweet Farm Road, can you hear me?
We got you.
Thank you very much. I would just like to say, as you look at the monstrosity that's being built on the federal land, yes, I understand that you have nothing to do with that. But as you look at that, you have to ask yourself, what in this ordinance would prevent that from happening in Portsmouth? And in essence, what you're telling us is, well, black and white of the ordinance, doesn't matter. Trust us, you know, some unnamed person on some board, look out for your interests, and we assure you that that will never happen in Portsmouth. Well, I'm sorry, that's just not good enough. Drive by, look at it, study it, and think about all the things you could do to make that better. And start thinking about why can't that be in our ordinance? Um, we need more details. We shouldn't have to come begging every time a developer wants to build next to us to protect some basic property rights of our own, right? It should be built in the ordinance upfront where there's no question, and also allow you as the town council some protection so you don't have to fight some large corporation with lots of money and lots of lawyers. Because you know what will happen? It'll get built, they'll win. So we want a stronger ordinance and we want to have a say in it. That's what really upsets us is that we had no say in this. We want a say, we deserve a say. We would like for you to give it to us. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Steely. Okay. All right, I think, uh, I think you have, um, there are no more, there's no more outstanding hands up. Uh, there's no unanswered questions. Um, so I'd like to circle back to our counselors.
Uh, Mr. President?
Mr. Kelly?
Those, those planning board workshops that occurred were duly posted meetings, subjected to the open meetings laws, and they were before COVID, correct?
Correct, they were in, uh, two thousand and some, they began in two thousand and nineteen. May have finished up around the first of the year, but I, I defer to Mr. Chappelle, I think he was, were you at the meeting, Mr. Chappelle?
Yes, they were, remember, a- and you're absolutely right, Kelly.
I already know the answer, by the way.
I know, but the, the first advertisement is a duly advertised council meeting to even entertain on the agenda whether or not we can, um, go forward on a solar ordinance. Then it was referred to the planning board, and the planning board had, now, you don't notify the neighbors of West Passage because it's townwide. So it's duly advertised Secretary of State Planning Board meeting, and there were three of them, so there were three opportunities. Then it comes back to the council, fully advertised again, for the sole purpose of asking to advertise. Then it was advertised three successive times in the paper. The only thing, only thing that didn't happen was on March fifth, fourteenth, it was a meeting on the eleventh that was canceled. Had someone gone to the town hall and said, I convene in this meeting and based on COVID, I continue it till fifth, there would be no issue. But anybody that was gonna be there to think I just stopped looking and stopped worrying, knew about it when it was duly advertised for the eleventh, but didn't bother to find out that the entire agenda, not just this, the entire agenda was continued to that April fifth day or whatever it was. I, I get that people may resist it maybe, or they didn't think it affected them at the time. But everything that was supposed to be done was done, but for one thing. COVID didn't allow one guy, like you do in a snowstorm, to open the meeting, continue it a month, swing the gavel, which would have required no more notice. It was the only thing, and I didn't hear from any of these people at any of the planning boards. It doesn't make their comments not valid. It's just, I started in June of nineteen, I was already apologizing to my guy for taking almost a year. Now it's gonna, it's eighteen months later from when we started. And there was a lot of comment, I, I like the ordinance. If somebody wants to change it, do the same thing I did. File tomorrow in front of the board and say, look, we want this change. You can do that. I basically had a solar ordinance that just was suspect because of Judge Van Guggen and changed it to make it allowable hopefully for everybody and followed all the rules. And anybody else can follow the rules now. I just don't, I, I get it, I just would like not to start over on an entire ordinance over some concerns that I think are addressed. And how specific? If you change it to a minimum a hundred feet, can the board vary it? I mean, it's just to trying to get some numbers that were minimums and give more authority than any other ordinance I've read to make sure that every concern that everybody has raised today are met. I'm sorry that you have to go to a board when something happens in your neighborhood, but those are the rules. I got down in an industrial piece, you all know where I live, and I, and next to me was so much different than it is today. Newport beat everybody, they came around me, changed the law and did it. I mean, that's part of a small town and watching the ordinances and participating in the process. And, and the opportunity to participate is different from the opportunity to win, but it's, the opportunity to participate is there and was there for everybody here.
If I may, Mr. President?
Uh, hold on one second, Mr. Kelly? Mr. Kelly had a question. Are you also, Mr. Kelly? Are we, you still?
For now.
Okay, all right, Ms. Abbott?
Um, yeah, Mr. Chappelle, I, I fully appreciate that you were hired by your client to draft an ordinance and you went through all the steps, um, and you're trying to deliver this uh, for your client, but I think, um, us as public elected officials, we do really have to weigh the views and opinions of our constituents and the town of Portsmouth above and beyond any of, of, any of those points. Um, I, I think it's unfortunate circumstances that we had a, you know, a global pandemic, beginning of April, like April fifth, frankly, I, I, I think, like everybody else, everybody was kind of had their mind on other issues at the time, and the timing was probably not great. Um, I'm a little disappointed to hear that, you know, it sounds like Grow Smart, or I probably, maybe wasn't even, um, consulted into the drafting of this bill. I know they did draft the, uh, the model one, I digress. Um, I would make a motion that we put this back to the planning board and have them consider the comments and recommendations from Grow Smart, or I, and look at how we can restrict this further, because I do feel very strongly that the onus should not be on a butters to prevent things, ba- bad things from happening in their neighborhood. The, it's our responsibility as the quote-unquote caretakers of our town to ensure that our processes and rules prevent bad things from happening. And, you know, the, the horrendous solar farm on West Main Road and Stringham Road has swayed my opinion drastically. And I, you know, we don't wanna see more, anymore like that, and, and whether you add more details or, um, don't allow them in residential neighborhoods, I think there are improvements we can make to the ordinance that would help mitigate some of these long-term concerns.
Um, Mr. President, Lyndu Jafusa, um, I would second that motion with, um, for discussion. Um, I would only add that it's a super complicated issue. Um, I don't profess to have the expertise to understand all the details, but, um, I do have to commend our staff for trying to put together this ordinance and serve, balance many, many, uh, opposing interests. And so, I, and just for example, um, I heard some people speaking about how we don't want our farmlands to turn into industrial solar um, farms. On the other hand, there are certain studies that have shown that solar, um, allowing solar on farms is an excellent way to help farmers, um, supplement their, their revenue. So nothing is black and white. Um, I agree that this is not a perfect process. Um, but in these specific circumstances, it makes sense to have, um, the planning board be able to take into account specific suggestions to improve the solar ordinance, in my opinion. Thank you.
Okay, I just, um, so we, we're still in a public hearing. Is, is there a, a motion to close the public hearing or no?
I'm sorry, I made a move. Second.
So we have a motion and a second to close a public hearing. All those in favor?
Ms. Jafusa?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Capson?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
And Mr. Aguirre?
Aye. Motion passes seven to zero to close public hearing. Now we have a, a motion and a second for discussion to refer the ordinance back to planning. Is there any further discussion on?
Yeah, I would just like to add, I mean, I, I really do appreciate the amount of work and effort that has already gone into developing this solar ordinance. Um, and I know we already approved it, I just think at this stage of the game, delaying it a few more weeks or however long is really does not matter, and I think it would go a long way to, to easing people's concerns with this ordinance and allowing us to take another look at, at specifically addressing those concerns. So if it, you know, if we wanna put a time limit on it to, to look at it and come back to it, I would be open to that as well.
Um, if, if, if that were the case, um, I think the planning board would have to have public hearings on this. So it, it will be, uh, I mean, it will be, uh, it'll be a lengthy process to go through the, through, it's a public hearing process all, you know, basically all over again. Um, so I, I mean, I'm just trying to, I just wanna make sure that I'm not, we're not, you know, thinking that this is gonna be something that could occur in, in a, in a month. I think it's, I think we're just trying to make sure that we all understand what the process is. But that's all I'm getting at, is just to clarify, when we say a time limit, that might be several months.
Okay, what, so what's the alternative? That we recommend changes? I don't think we, I mean, I don't feel like I have the expertise um, or enough information to recommend changes, so I, I think we unfortunately might have to go through the process again and let the, the, you know, who has the comments from Smart, Grow Smart, or I, actually, that's my first question. And can we see what they are and what their recommendations were? Because I think that would be a, a pretty reasonable starting point.
That, that was submitted today. Comments?
And Mr. Mr. President, I have a question. Is the lengthy process you're referring to our only alternative? We cannot, for example, just have a workshop, um?
I, I-
Is there any way to expedite things is what I'm asking?
I, that, that I don't know. I mean, that's, I'm asking that, I kinda, I guess that's what we're asking the question right now, is, um, if we're referring it back to the planning board, if the planning board is the, is the body that makes these recommendations, I don't know if it's a workshop is sufficient as opposed to a public hearing. That's, I don't know. I'm, I'm asking that question, I'm not, I, I don't, I'm not coming across as we shouldn't do this. I'm just trying to understand what the process is so that there's no misunderstanding. It's not a, it's not like when someone said, uh, we put a time limit on this, I don't know if we could do that tonight. Um, because I don't know what that process is. That, that's all I'm saying.
Okay, would it be an option for us to get time to review the, the comments and suggestions from Grow Smart? And to, you know, mull those over and compare them to the existing ordinance? And make suggestions for revisions ourselves, or is that-
Counselors, we, I think we as counselors could continue this, could continue our decision until, until the next meeting if it were, if it were strictly counselors making recommendations. Because the, the ordinance has gone through and been, um, and, and, Mr. Gavin, correct me if I'm wrong, um, we have a, we have a draft ordinance that was reviewed and presented by the planning board. So that was their recommendation to us, okay? So now I, I think if we want to then make changes to it, I think we have that authority to make those changes. Is that, is that a fair statement, Mr. Gavin?
You're muted, Mr. Gavin.
I can't speak for this is Gary Crosby. I can't speak for Mr. Gavin. Oh, is he? Is he jumping in?
I'm trying to. All right, am I on?
Yes.
You know, we this is a very unique situation. I I think the best thing, in my opinion, would be to do is to reaffirm the ordinance and then look to the planning board to try to look for, you know, to tweak it or whatever you want to do. But right now, we're in a limbo situation if we have, you know, this ordinance, it's been in place since May, it's it's been challenged legally by by a citizen who sent a letter and I think it's best to keep the ordinance in place and or make any, if you want to make any changes tonight, the council can make some changes. But I I don't think we should just, in my opinion, I don't think it's best to leave it in this situation. We've had, we've had two two petitions that have been before the board on this ordinance and I don't know. I I don't know what to tell you. I mean, I think we should, I think it's obviously the council's decision, not mine, but I think it would be better to you know, make a motion to reaffirm the ordinance and then go forward to make changes that that people think are appropriate later or 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 to whatever, but
Can we not reaffirm the ordinance?
Excuse me?
Could we not reaffirm the ordinance and and
Good.
Request time to to, you know, consider revisions and not without referring it back to the planning board? I guess that's the question.
I think the council could just decide to reject the ordinance now and then not have an ordinance.
But Mr. Gavin, I mean, could we continue this, this, could we continue this meeting to our next meeting of December 14th, where the where the council could then render its decision if they were, if 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 we wanted to make any changes to the ordinance? I mean, we just
Yeah, right now we're having, we're in a hearing. The council's in a hearing. You can continue this hearing.
Right. Well, we we we're in a hearing. We just closed the public hearing, but we have not rendered a decision. There's a, the council has the, because we, because we just went through the
Right.
process of a public hearing, we can, as a council, modify the ordinance. We we have that as a council, we have that authority.
Yes, continue.
As a council, we have that authority.
Right, the the hearing's been closed, but you can continue it for a vote.
Okay, so so to Ms. Abbott's question, we could continue this until our, the 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 short answer is we could continue this to our December meeting and then vote, discuss and vote on changes imposed by the council.
You can vote to to affirm, you know, basically adopt, re-adopt the ordinance as it is, make some changes or throw it out altogether. But 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 right, I mean, I think right now it's in kind of limbo and I think we
I understand we might be in limbo, but I think I was just trying to get, I was just trying to get an answer to Ms. Abbott's question, which is we could, as a council, continue with and and make changes and vote on that as a council.
Yeah.
Short of that, it would be denied or or remanded back to the planning board, which then may, you know, restart a portion of the process. Because that's, I think those are the two options.
Right. I mean, right now there's an ordinance that's been adopted that that has been questioned as to whether it's valid or not. And I think we should move forward and and the council should move forward and either reaffirm that or make some changes or reject it. I don't, I don't think we should just have have this be in a state of limbo.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Gavin. I, oh, sorry, go ahead, Linda.
I I just have a question, Mr. Gavin. Is if we leave it in place for the next few weeks, are there people who could apply under this existing ordinance?
Yeah, people could apply right now. People can apply and, I mean, there's been two applications already. One was, you know, residential ones that one was approved, one was denied. But, yeah, I mean, the ordinance is 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 there right now, but it's been challenged.
I mean, we're in the middle of a pandemic. Thanksgiving is this week. Christmas is coming up. I mean, two weeks, two more weeks of limbo is
Not been a deluge of of applications for of solar.
And there won't be in the next two weeks, most likely either. But, um, okay.
Can I step in, please, Gary Crosby? I think if we are, if we are going to go back, if the town council is going to go back to the planning board and say, we want you to reconsider this or that about this ordinance, I think it in order to be able to focus the planning boards thinking about the subject, it would be important to go back to the planning board and say, we want you to consider this and this and this and this amendments to this current ordinance and 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 allow them to do that.
I agree wholeheartedly with Gary right there. I mean, you can't just say, you know, punt it back to the planning board and they got to consider a specific proposal. And if it's if we're going to amend the ordinance, you know, send it back to them with a with a an ordinance that's amended in certain, you know, specifics.
Okay.
If I could say something, it seems to me, listening to what's gone on tonight, a lot of the objective, well, some of the objections that have been raised by folks who are butting the proposed places seem, as far as I can tell, to have been addressed in the ordinance as it exists. So it would be, I think, extremely helpful for the people who have the greatest concerns about the construction of solar farms to be able to sit down with people who actually know what's going on, those people don't really include me, and actually have their questions answered. Does your specific question or concern, is it, how is it addressed in the ordinance? And if, you know, and I think a reasonable discussion, you know, as I think somebody else suggested, a workshop at some point where maybe, you know, the town planner, maybe some people from the planning board could just sit down and have a discussion with the, you know, with the people who have the greatest concerns. And it may well be that that there aren't that many changes that need to be made. Because a lot of the things that I heard tonight seem to have been already addressed by Mr. Chappelle when he was making his presentation. I'm not sure how much of it is just people are very worried and haven't fully grasped the, I mean, this is an enormous, it's got a lot of stuff in it. And I'm not sure if I understood in the first reading. So I think it would be really helpful if people who know the most about it were able to answer the questions to the people who are most concerned.
Right. And but in that regard, maybe the most appropriate thing would be to to do would be to just to to a vote if the, if that's the council's pleasure to vote to reaffirm the adoption of this ordinance and then it it can be reviewed and amended and tweaked and however the council wants to do. But right now, it's in a kind of a state of limbo and given the legal challenge of whether the ordinance is valid at all because of the glitch with the COVID and the lack of re-advertising.
So I'd like to retract my motion to refer this back to the planning board. It sounds like that's not the right course of action. There was a second on that. So I, what do I have to do to retract it?
I take back my second if that
All right. And does that meet the the requirements? Let me know if I need to say something else. On that note, I I feel like there were comments made during this meeting and there was information provided that we did not have the opportunity to review. I feel like two extra weeks of limbo for this kind of ordinance is really kind of negligible at this point. So I I would be in favor of tabling a vote on this in for another two weeks so we can review the the information provided by Grow Smart, our eye, and kind of understand what kinds of changes they suggested to help improve our zoning ordinance and then decide whether we want to reaffirm it, make minor tweaks or whether we feel like it's it's justified to go back to the the planning board with additional, you know, more elaborate comments.
And to add to that, maybe ask that the people who have the greatest concerns put exactly what they are proposing to change right and submit it so that that can be concerned, it can be considered as we're reading the information from Grow Smart and whatnot.
If I may, if we're going to sort of maintain this limbo about, quote unquote, limbo about this ordinance, what about the two applications that we have had, one approved and one denied? Are they in limbo as well? Do we have a current ordinance or do we not?
I I guess they wait for two weeks and are in limbo as well, no?
What? What?
Can't, I don't know. We, I, Mr. Gavin, we, do we have, we have an ordinance in place that that we voted on and approved, correct?
We have, that's correct, but someone has raised the issue of whether the ordinance is annulled due to the lack of the re-advertising after the hearing was canceled because of COVID.
So I I think either way, either way, we're, we're
In other words, I think, I'm going to have to say, I think it's better to resolve this sooner rather than later. And either, you know, either reaffirm the ordinance or make some tweaks or whatever, but not not kick this down the road for a long period of time. That would be
And and I think it, I think it doesn't sound like we're going to we're in a position where we could vote on it tonight because of some questions by counselors. So
There is an ordinance, there is, the council adopted this ordinance on May 11. It's on the E code, on the general code. If someone looks up the ordinances, there it is.
Right.
You know, but
I I understand, I understand the position we're in, but we just had a, we just we just had a public hearing and we have not rendered a new decision.
Right.
And I think that if we extended this to the two weeks to render our decision at that point,
Yes.
that's the the earliest we're going to be able to render our decision.
I agree. And at that point, then the council can decide to reaffirm the ordinance as as it was enacted on May 11, make some amendments, you know, or
Right.
Throw it out altogether if you want, but
I just, I just want to caution that we we have closed the public hearing. So what we do have is we have the information that was provided to us by Grow Smart. So I I would say our our focus has to be limited to the the testimony we heard tonight and the information we have. I I would, I would strongly discourage any additional information being submitted to us because we've closed the public hearing. So in all fairness to both sides, we have the information and we can, as counselors, use our best judgment to compile our our decision or our our discussion topic for December, for our December 14th meeting.
Yes, agreed.
I will second Ms. Abbott's motion to table this until the 14th because I don't think that's been done yet.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to to table this until our regular meeting of December 14th. All those in favor?
Ms. Jufusa?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Katzen?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
And Mr. Aguirre?
Aye. Motion passes seven. We will pick this up again on the 14th of December.
I'd just like to say, I realize this is difficult and I thank you for your time and I get it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
But I in your chairs, I understand exactly what you're doing and why. So thank you and we'll see you on the 14th, okay?
Okay.
Very much for your time.
Yep.
Go your holiday. Got to figure out how to get out of here now.
Leave meeting.
It might take me a while.
We'll, we'll, we'll get rid of it. He's a panelist, now we can retract it. All right, so. Okay, counsel. Next item. Our next item.
Do we need a coffee break or something? I'm joking.
I do.
I would say we could continue this, but we need an answer by December first.
Well, and remember though, we opened this up to comments from some folks of this, this, I know it's late, but this could go on for a little bit. I just want to, if we're, if everybody's in, let's, let's move. I'm okay, I just
I was probably hoping never to have a meeting past midnight, but I'm sure we're going to get there.
All right. Okay, so this is a continuation of our discussion regarding the previous National Grid presentation. So at the last meeting, it was tabled. For further information. Ms. Jufusa? Do you want to?
Yeah, I I just appreciate, Mr. President, the opportunity to have another point of view that would frankly critique the on presentation that National Grid gave us. And I just think it's our obligation as a town council to hear a spectrum, a wider spectrum of 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 opinions about this very important issue. So take it away, Mr. Webster. It's going to be a relatively short presentation.
You should make
Okay.
Webster a panelist. Mr. Webster, are you there?
I am here.
Hey.
I think for just bandwidth concerns, I'll keep my video off for the moment. And then I'll turn it back on for questions towards the end. Thank you very much for allowing me to speak. Oh, and my address is 50, is 144 Westminster Street in Providence, Rhode Island. That's our, that's our office address, if you need it for the record. So thank you very much for allowing me to speak with you tonight. My name is Hank Webster and I am the Rhode Island Director and Attorney for Acadia Center. Fundamentally, my presentation tonight is about the broad choice that Aquinic Island has before it, whether it wants to deepen its reliance on natural gas or whether it will take this moment to start down a path to a cleaner, safer and more positive future. Next slide, please. So first a bit about Acadia Center. We are an independent nonprofit data and policy research organization. We're proud to have earned the distinction of being one of only five environmental organizations in the country to earn a perfect 100 score from Charity Navigator. And our work in Rhode Island energy policy includes working alongside National Grid on several groups, including energy efficiency and system reliability, power sector and mobility innovation. Skip ahead two slides, please. We can go right by that one. Perfect. So a lot of fossil fuel proponents have promoted the idea that natural gas is a clean heating fuel and that we should even convert all buildings that use other fuels over to natural gas. So for the sake of argument, we asked, what would that look like in terms of greenhouse gas emissions? And as you can see, the emission savings are not that significant until and unless you move away from fossil fuels and towards technologies like air source and ground source heat pumps and even geothermal micro districts. Now, if you're not that concerned about greenhouse gases or climate change or don't think that human activity contributes to either, stick, stick with me because there are many other reasons to move your community away from fossil fuels that might feel a little closer to home. that might feel a little closer to home. Next slide, please. So in the context of National Grid's proposals, I find it helpful to think of the yellow dash line, and this is from National Grid's own presentations. I find it's helpful to think of that yellow dash line as a budget for gas sales based on what it had negotiated with its transmission supplier and the infrastructure that it had in place. And as you can see, National Grid has chosen to exceed that budget and connect more customers than they could responsibly support. And now they're proposing to keep exceeding that budget by adding new customers over the next 15 years. And they're asking ratepayers across Rhode Island to pay for new gas infrastructure investments to support that business plan. Instead, we should be focused on addressing the problem that is in front of us. And that is how do we bring down gas sales below the budgeted line that National Grid can responsibly support with its contractual agreements and without additional gas infrastructure investment? So the larger, long-term problem on the right-hand side, if it came to bear, would be one of National Grid's own making and is completely avoidable through smart policy decisions. Their decision to only structure and present a portfolio of investments for that larger problem distorts the conversation in favor of the utility's bottom line. But let's spend a moment anyways, digging into some of the National Grid study on proposed solutions because there's some interesting takeaways. Next slide, please. So this is National Grid's chart from their Energy Matters presentation. This is also on page 15 of their study, and there are two things that I want to point out on this chart. First, the study ignores the significant cost of actually making all the new gas connections to buildings that National Grid assumes in the future of gas expansion. And these can easily be in the neighborhood of $15,000 per connection. And they're not included in this study because National Grid assumes those connections will occur in each of these scenarios. So we're talking tens of millions of dollars or more on top of each of the gas infrastructure investments. However, if National Grid starts today with its pursuit of a non-infrastructure or clean heating pathway solution, these additional connection costs would be avoided. And the second thing I want to point out is that this study does not factor in the long-term regulatory or legal costs associated with pursuing a new pipeline project, which will require several levels of review, including federal approval. Political headwinds against new pipelines are likely to manifest in Massachusetts as they have in other places. In fact, the state's recently initiated a study of a structured wind down of the gas distribution system. And National Grid has acknowledged that without Massachusetts on the hook, the cost of the pipeline option increases by 75%. So instead of the $147 million figure you see here, Rhode Islanders would pay more than $257 million at a minimum and likely much more. Finally, there's another key graph in National Grid's study that they've chosen to repeatedly omit from public presentations. And that is what these investments actually mean for Rhode Islanders when you account for the benefits of each choice. And that's what this next chart represents. Next page. So this graph is found on page 97 of their study. And this methodology looks at costs and benefits that would impact Rhode Island more broadly, including the benefits realized over the full lifetime of the demand-side measures like weatherization and and efficiency. This best captures the actual consumer value proposition for each solution and not just the cost that the utility claims it will incur. When you consider this, you see that the non-infrastructure solution all the way to the right, which weatherizes buildings and helps people transition away from fossil fuels, is superior to any of the new gas investments proposed by National Grid, even more so when you again add in the avoided costs of those new gas customer connections. So why might National Grid not have presented this information in their presentations across the island? I offer that it does not align with their business model to do so. Next slide, please. Utilities that own both gas and electric companies face a conflict of interest when it comes to home heating. When a customer converts from oil to gas, a utility will collect a monthly fixed charge from that new customer. But if that same customer were to move from oil to a heat pump, the utility would not collect any additional monthly charges because the customer already has an electric bill. The gas utility is also incentivized to push for oil-to-gas conversions in homes that are off the existing gas lines. Gas utilities earn a regulated rate of return on new gas pipes and other infrastructure, which they collect from across their entire customer base. Although National Grid's electric utility also earns a similar rate of return, the incremental infrastructure needed to serve more heat pumps is far less because electric lines already run to that customer. This all means the utility makes more money by securing a new gas customer than by better utilizing the electric system to also deliver heat to a building. Next slide, please. And there's yet another cost that's not factored into National Grid's presentations, and that's the long-term gas price increases that are projected by the industry itself as companies seek to rely more upon so-called decarbonized natural gases to meet climate goals mandated by states. Decarbonized gases may include things like renewable natural gas, which can be claimed from waste sources, or it could also include future development of hydrogen. In any case, the industry projects that in order to generate enough supply of either of these or a mix of these gases, the costs will increase as new technologies and facilities will need to be developed. Next slide, please. This is a chart provided by the American Gas Foundation, and it shows that costs could increase about eight times from what they are today, to be precise. This chart, which is admittedly hard to read, comes directly from the state's Heating Sector Transformation Study Process and demonstrates the significant cost escalation of pursuing these fuels, which National Grid has pledged to do in its own decarbonization plans. So just one more note on this. I know hydrogen is often touted by the industry as a future panacea for energy woes. And I believe hydrogen does have a role to play in driving towards a clean energy future. But I don't think it's a prudent investment for home heating. For one, beyond a marginal blend of hydrogen mixed into natural gas, you would need to replace appliances and pipelines. Finally, at the end of the day, you are still delivering a highly potent fuel into buildings and not alleviating the public safety risks. Next slide, please. So we arrive back at the narrower question of how do we solve the problem on the left, the problem that we have in front of us? How should we dedicate ratepayer funds to solve the smaller deficit that we have today? We ran an analysis that looks at the actual gas load impacts of different appliances and pulled together housing and census data and costs of clean heating measures to replace the gas use. And we assumed a worst-case scenario for both the measure costs and the program administration costs, just to be conservative. And here's what we found. Next slide, please. To solve the near-term supply constraint, you can deploy any one of these strategies or scenarios, or more realistically, a mix of them. These assume the homeowner pays nothing and the full costs of a measure are covered through incentives. To be conservative, we also assume the program administration costs would be much higher than the other programs currently administered by National Grid. So it is possible that you could bring gas consumption below that budgeted yellow line for under $10 million using the heat pump water heater solution. And this technology is commonly available from your local contractors or big box stores. Or you could reduce the number of homes required that require action by combining a heat pump and a heat pump water heater. You could add in weatherization, again, to bring down the number of homes. So these should be read as as individual choices, not necessarily cumulative. But most importantly for your conversation tonight perhaps is that if National Grid put a concerted effort into this type of program, you could see the capacity constraint that exists today disappear in a matter of three to four years. And that would allow the Old Mill Lane facility to cease operation in the timeline that National Grid says is a minimum. Next slide, please. And just to cast aside any doubts that heat pumps work in cold climates, here's a small sample of heat pump deployments from places that are colder than Rhode Island. And I can tell you in my own experience that they work just fine over here in West Greenwich, which is usually a little colder than Portsmouth. Next slide, please. And these are just some of the benefits of heat pumps. Notably, they provide both heating and cooling functions as well as a fan and dry setting. So you can simply circulate air or dehumidify a space. And if you also have a generator or solar panels or even a home battery storage system, you can further increase system independence and resiliency. Meanwhile, it's unlikely you'll ever develop your own supply of natural gas in your backyard. So you would remain entirely dependent on the utility to deliver it to you, and you would be subject to their rates. Next slide, please. I'd also like to quickly dispel the notion that growth or economic development is dependent on gas. New large commercial buildings can operate without fossil fuels with good energy-efficient design from the start. Air source heat pumps are better yet, ground source heat pumps can take advantage of the earth's constant subterranean temperature of 55 degrees. National Grid can even pursue investments in geothermal micro districts to repurpose existing gas lines and deliver clean energy solutions. And as an aside, while I was listening tonight, I'd note the numerous comments from your constituents that seem to indicate they don't want much new housing or other development in the community. So again, National Grid's projections of unfettered gas growth may be inconsistent with the desires of your community. Next slide. And finally, just a couple of notes on health and safety. The choice to pursue additional gas infrastructure and gas consumption on the island has implications for your constituents. There are well-documented health effects from the combustion of natural gas on site and in the local environment. And children are most at risk, and in particular, children living in smaller spaces, the likes of which you may see in low-income housing units. Gas combustion emits a host of pollutants that are harmful to human health. Next slide, please. And gas also poses a more sudden risk to your community's well-being. If you'll indulge me for just another few minutes, I believe one of the primary responsibilities of any elected official is to keep their community safe. And I believe that each of you shares that belief as well. And you're coming at this energy problem with the best of intentions. But in its presentations, National Grid claimed each of their proposals was safe. And I feel duty-bound to tell you that increasing the amount of gas coming into any community is not safe and injects an increasingly unnecessary risk. Next slide, please. In Merrimack Valley, the community suffered a widespread explosion or a set of widespread explosions from an overpressurization event in September 2018. Dozens of people were injured and the disaster took the life of Leonel Rendon, who was just 18 years old at the time. 30,000 people were evacuated, dozens of homes were destroyed, and the total financial toll amounted to over $1 billion. Next slide. And this slide just demonstrates how an interconnected network of gas pipes beneath your community streets presents a more widespread risk to the public than perhaps is advertised by the gas utilities. Next slide, please. Just a year after the September 2018 explosions, more leaks were reported on a section of pipe that was replaced in the wake of the previous year's disaster. This time, emergency crews were able to avert tragedy by waking and evacuating residents at 3:00 AM. Next slide, please. Some other examples of of gas going wrong. Also in 2019, a shopping center was leveled in Plantation, Florida. Next slide, please. The following month, in August of 2019, another shopping facility in Columbia, Maryland was also leveled. Next slide. And closer to home, as you all know, was Aquinic Island's own emergency, which thankfully avoided the worst of possible outcomes. And it's important here to remember that both major investigations into the incident determined that it took all three failures on the part of the utility and transmission company for the outage to occur. The reports clearly identify the errors were committed by the very parties that are now asking to be entrusted with building, maintaining and operating more and more gas infrastructure. Next slide, please. And just in case you think that the that the Aquinic Island outage was, you know, Rhode Island's only brush with this, here's some frequent gas examples or examples of other gas emergencies. There was a Providence gas leak in May 2019. And just look at the quote from the battalion chief, "The gas venting out of the the leak sounded like a freight train." Next slide, please. Less than a week later, just down the road, and this is near our office, there was another gas leak in downtown Providence with, you know, several historic buildings surrounding it. Next slide, please. A few months later, another leak was detected at the Providence Public Library, forcing this evacuation. Next slide. And here's some more recent examples just from the last few months. And I'd just note that on Long Island, three homes were destroyed and two firefighters plus a homeowner were airlifted with injuries. An explosion in Baltimore killed two and injured seven more. Next slide, please. And finally, I chose this last picture out of all of the numerous gas safety disasters that I've I've found over the years because it reminds me of some of the local landscape of Aquinic Island. This was an explosion in an underground natural gas pipeline operated by Enbridge. I recall hearing a comment at a recent meeting that the underground pipeline option was the safest safest option for your community. And what I'd like you all to take away from these past few slides is that when you are dealing with such a potent combustible fuel, there really is no safest option except to turn away and transition to a clean energy future that actually provides benefits to your constituents. Each of the other proposals to build more gas infrastructure just helps National Grid deliver the product to you. The customer won't actually be empowered to save energy or money. This explosion killed Denise Derringer at age 58 and injured five more people beyond that. Ask yourself, is there a Denise Derringer in your community or a family of five that you're particularly fond of? I respectfully ask that you think of all the ramifications of potentially bringing more gas onto Aquinic Island. Next slide, please. That's, that's it for my presentation. I really want to express my appreciation for you making the time for me to speak with you tonight, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Mr. Webster? Any questions from my council?
I have one. Mr. Webster has proffered that it would cost $1 million to to under $10 trillion, I think it's 9.2 on that slide, to get our homeowners here in Portsmouth below that level by doing 3,068 households, I believe was the number on there. And being that you are a nonprofit and do a pretty good job of raising funds for your organization, I'd wonder if you could use that $10 million and get that program going.
So you were breaking up a little bit, but I believe that the the impetus of your question was, why doesn't my organization just pay for this?
Well, help us raise the money to pay for it, yes.
Well, I, I would note that this is ratepayer funds that will be requested but from National Grid for any of these solutions. So I'm not really sure what the why pursuing a clean energy solution would only fall to a nonprofit. National Grid would be able to also pursue a clean energy solution in the same way that they would request funds for a fossil gas solution. I'd also note that it's not just the, this, this number of homes is for all of Aquinic Island. So it's not just on Portsmouth as a community.
Well, the way you presented it, you, it was, it's just that easy. So I was hoping that you would be able to be just that easy and help us out to get us through the situation. A- as far as gas lines go, I appreciate the this, the fear-mongering of all those blowups. But putting in a new pipeline in the North End not only increases the availability of gas, but also increases the safety of the gas being transmitted through and helps stop the deadheading in the flow of the gas, which is part of what the issue was down in Newport. So it's not just about increased capacity, but it's also about the ability of the gas to flow through the system as well. Releasing or stopping the flow of natural gas onto the island is, is, you know, pardon the pun, but a pipe dream is not going to ever stop. And other, other forms of renewable energies have their own inherent issues. You know, we heard them all about, oh, wind turbines are going to throw ice shears. They're, they're not recyclable, solar panels are not recyclable. You just sat through unfortunately three hours of solar panel talk. So each of these options come with their own issues. And I think, no, not, I wouldn't stay in all the above because we certainly don't want to be keeping a liquefied natural gas facility down on Old Mill Lane. And that should be our first concern right now is to and what the president was trying to get at when he was railroaded at the last meeting was just a simple letter to say, we don't want to have a long-term solution that includes natural gas at Old Mill Lane. And to force Natural, National Grid out and find the solutions. I'm asking you to help us find another solution. If you've got the ability to raise funds and and work with the town of Portsmouth to to make that $10 million or as you stated.
Mr. President, I I believe that Mr. Hamilton is going off track here. I just wanted the.
How am I going off track?
Because we are.
Asking for help to solve a problem.
No, you asked at the last meeting, and I I sort of am surprised that you think anything was railroaded. We were simply going to make comments that were going to be submitted to National Grid. And those comments were going to only be based on National Grid's presentation to us about their own report about about things that Mr. Webster has pointed out, did not accurately give us information about. about, about things that Mr. Webster has pointed out did not accurately give us information about the costs and benefits to our community. His presentation has helped round out that picture. I do not consider it fear mongering to be presenting facts to us that will help us protect the safety of our citizens. So I think
Showing pictures of places that have blown up is fear mongering, period.
Mr. Hamilton, Mr. Hamilton, there is only there is only an opportunity right now to submit our comments to National Grid. And I wrote a draft letter, which you will see is attached as a very straightforward presentation of exactly what you were saying that I railroaded out of the last meeting, which is that we all want the LNG facility on Old Mill Lane to be moved away as quickly as possible. What Mr. Webster has presented is that it was misleading of National Grid to say that the pipeline would be the cheapest option to our constituents and also the fastest way to get rid of that LNG on Old Mill Lane. That was misleading.
That is not what National Grid presented. They said it was the longest and most expensive option, so.
Hold on a second, your folks.
Well, in any case, I think we
Hold on, hold on.
Making our comments to National Grid. I just wanted to have a more complete picture and I believe we've gotten it. And, you know, I'm prepared to present that letter that I presented as a draft as backup. And I believe, like I said, there are things that we completely agree about all of us. And then there are things that we will not agree about. And I wanted to make sure that we had the opportunity to make those comments to National Grid, so that's all.
Let me, let me just circle back here as this was my item on the agenda at the last meeting. And my intentions were to get us as a town council. It seemed like we were all in agreement about the opposition to the LNG facility continuing a long term operation on Old Mill Lane. I think we're unanimous on that.
Yes, can we bring up my letter, my draft letter, Mr. President?
Oh, we still got some other folks that I think are going to want to talk here. And we'll get to the, we'll get to the letter in a second. The intent was, National Grid did a presentation and they asked us, they asked all the citizens that were participating to send comments. And I, and I encourage everyone that's listening to send your comments. As a council, I felt we could send a message that we were opposed to that being a long term solution. It's true, National Grid did present us four options. I don't think, I think they presented four options and said, we want your feedback. So my initial, my initial thought was, as a council, do we have, do we have a sense as to, do we support one of these options? Yes, no. It's kind of a ball, I really, at this point, I'm very reluctant to make any type of recommendation on which option to pursue as a council. And I don't think we should as a council. I know we could talk, we could, we could indicate, you know, we prefer these options. And I think that's the type of feedback that that National Grid is looking for. I, I don't want us to get all, we're not here to solve this problem. We're here to express our opposition to Old Mill Lane being a long term solution. They have four options. They have not made a decision on what those four options might be, on which of the four options they're going to pursue. My guess is, is that based on all the comments that they received, that the final decision or direction that they had is probably going to be a hybrid of those options. It might be, it may take, you know, a few things and revisit it and refine it and come back with an option. But it's really National Grid's. It's their project. We can make comments, but I think National Grid to some extent is going to do what National Grid is going to do. Because they provide the electricity and they also provide the gas. So I would like us to not try to get too caught up in each of the four options. It's important, it's important to make comments, but as a council, we're not going to agree on which option. And I don't think we, really, I don't, I take it back. I don't think we should be in that position to make a recommendation as a council for which option we support.
Okay, I'm sorry, Mr. President, because I thought you were, because I believe that
You know, I
That's why I put it in the left.
I understand that, but based on all of the comments that have occurred, there's, there's a butters that are going to want to speak. And everybody's going to have a different opinion. And I don't, I don't know what the answer is. What I do know is that as a council, it sounds like we are unanimous in our opposition to Old Mill Lane being a long term solution. If we, if we do nothing more than put that on the record, then if everyone else wants to chime in independently and put your pros and cons about which option, I think that's what National Grid is looking for. But as a council, we're not going to be unified as a solution. Because I think we all have our own opinions on what might be a good option. And I don't want to send a mixed message as to what the council really is intending. I think we're unanimous in our opposition to Old Mill Lane being LNG being a long term solution. I think National Grid has also stated that. And so I think we're unanimous in that.
Right, no, I agree, I agree. And I do appreciate the opportunity to have had Mr. Webster speak because again, I just feel that it's up to the town council to help educate the public and become educated ourselves. And you are right, they are going to make the decision that they want. However, I just wanted to make sure that they were not the only voice being heard by the citizens of Portsmouth, that's all.
I understand, I appreciate it. I thought Mr. Webster, you know, he presented his opinions. We have that information, but knowing that we allowed Mr. Webster to make his presentation, I knew we were going to get other folks that were going to want to make a statement. So I am, we have two hands up, I don't know which one was first. Who was? Mr. K, Mr. Katsman, yeah, well, okay, three hands up. Mr. Katsman, before I go to the other folks.
Thank you, Mr. President, I appreciate that. I agree with, I think where we're heading, which is something along the lines of items number one and two on Missoula Jufusa's draft letter. Which, which I think the council has can find consensus on those points about getting the LNG, the gas facility out of Old Mill Lane as quickly as possible. And keeping safety in mind, personally, I'm opposed to additional fossil fuel infrastructure. So I wouldn't, I don't like the idea of a pipeline. And I also think that slide number, my Zoom screen is blocking it, there it is. Oh, the slide that shows it's cheaper to not do the infrastructure is persuasive to me more than pictures of things that are blown up, frankly. All that said, that's just my opinion on what I prefer, and I think that we won't find consensus consensus on what each of us may want to recommend. But it is important to have a unified voice that the Old Mill Lane facility is not appropriate and needs to go as soon as possible. So I don't know where other testimonial comments from the public will go. But I would recommend and I would move that we adopt a letter that incorporates only items one and two of the draft presented by Missoula Jufusa.
And thank you, Mr. Katsman. And let me just go to the, to the folks that are online and then we'll circle back with councillors. Mr. Fitzmaurice.
Thank you, Mr. President. Do you have Tom Grebe still with us?
We have his hand up, that's all I know.
I'll defer to Mr. Grebe, let him go first, please.
Okay. Mr. Grebe.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, Mr. Grebe, name and address, even though we
Tom Grebe, one ten Sayer Drive.
Thank you.
First, I have a question. Does anyone on the council know where on Navy property is proposed the new facility option would be put? I've noticed that National Grid is very cautious in just putting it will be on Navy property.
Just to my knowledge, their official statement is that there's
Not been determined.
It's not been determined, it will be on Navy Right, it has not been determined because I think they're in that discussion with, and maybe they're in that discussion with National Grid. The reason that I think it was proposed is because at, for a time, National Grid was leasing land from the Navy and they were able to supplement the LNG from that location as well as the location over at Old Mill Lane, if necessary.
Okay, I'm aware of that.
Okay.
But you realize that you cannot tell me if that option would just switch an LNG facility from affecting one Portsmouth neighborhood on the east side to affecting a different Portsmouth neighborhood on the west side at a substantial cost.
Well, we don't know the location.
That's my point.
I don't know if it's Portsmouth, Middletown or Newport that that location would be at, so.
Well, at a Middletown meeting, when National Grid was presenting, they said that it would not be in Middletown and that it would be on the Tank Farm properties. Now, I don't know that's, you know, one, two, three, four, or five. But that's, that's what they, they said then at that direct question. And obviously, I was wondering if the council had been told where.
No, no.
Okay, so my point is, if you go for that option, you do not know if a new facility was going to be put in and changed from one Portsmouth residential area to another. I think that's an important thing for the council to understand as they're making their options. Now, let me, let me go on with my, what I prepared here. The council has been provided with strong evidence that the Newport outage was caused by a domino effect of management and equipment failures and that the gas supply to our region is increasing. So the Newport outage alleged to be a gas supply demand imbalance for the island does not make sense. Therefore, picking from National Grid's options could likely be the wrong way to go. It is no different than setting your child's bedtime from the options he or she has decided to give you. If the council wants to make a recommendation, it could recommend that National Grid put a moratorium on new customers. So the alleged supply demand imbalance does not get worse. That moratorium would remain in place until the Old Mill Lane facility is not needed. National Grid could also be asked to increase incentives for customers to insulate their homes and or upgrade their furnaces, which would decrease their gas usage through better efficiency and or conservation. Those increased incentives would stay in place until the Old Mill Lane facility was not needed. And finally, the council could ask the PUC to prioritize that Aquidnic Island gets its necessary share of the already increasing gas supply from the Algonquin Pipeline. After Old Mill Lane is gone, further growth in island gas customers should be commensurate with future supply growth from the pipeline or pipelines. Under this option, there will quickly be no LNG facility needed to negatively affect any Aquidnic Island neighborhood. It will minimize the cost to present customers, I'm sorry, to present customers while National Grid balances that supply demand and it provides an incentive for National Grid to do so quickly. The supply demand balance would happen much sooner than if National Grid continues to add new customers without constraint. Under this option, the facility could be gone from Old Mill Lane in two years or less. And no neighborhood on the island would have to deal with a similar or much larger LNG facility impacting its property values and quality of life. That's the option that I think the council should be considering. It was not given to you by National Grid. It does come close and I sent, right after the last meeting, I sent a message to a couple of councillors so that they could see that I had come to the same conclusion before I'd even heard or even knew Mr. Webster's name. It's, it's I'm just really worried that the council by saying get out of Old Mill Lane is going to change the spot where the gas storage is from one Portsmouth area to another. And I don't think that's right, it's going to cost a lot because they have to put a pipeline in to wherever they put it. That pipeline, in order to connect to the main is going to be very expensive. And the right thing to do is to stop any new customers, a moratorium of my customers until Old Mill Lane is not needed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Grebe. And now we will go back. Give it to Fitzmaurice.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll very briefly say that the report that Mr. Grebe refers to came from the US Department Transportation. And it was a study that they automatically made when there's any gas outage. Why the Department of Transportation does this and the Department of Energy is not clear to me. At any rate, that's a study that I sent to all members of the council. So, you know, and the other thing is that we support the idea that the LNG injection system in Old Mill Road needs to be removed. I don't think there's any question about that. The council's made the right decision there. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzmaurice.
Okay. Mr. President, there are two open questions, if I can just read them. They come from Representative-elect Michelle McGaw. She says, can we acknowledge that it is in Enbridge's best interest to present the options they prefer in the best light? And that it is important to recognize viewpoints of organizations that would be unbiased? She also asks, as the community that would have to provide storage, we have the great opportunity to provide guidance for what is best and safest for Portsmouth and Rhode Island. Thank you.
Mr. Schrod, just to, okay. Let's go back to Mr. Schrod.
Hi guys, can you hear me?
We got you, Mr. Schrod, that name and address again.
James Schrod, one zero one Benjamin Drive.
Thank you.
Two things I wanted to point out. As a resident of Portsmouth, National Grid is doing two things. They're seeking approval on these four comments, these four suggestions. But also in parallel, they're going to the energy facility siting board in seeking a what is it, they're seeking approval that this is a temporary facility. And I strongly suggest that Portsmouth is involved and objects to this being called the temporary facility. And the reason is that when it's a temporary facility, it doesn't have to go through the scrutiny that's required on citing a new energy facility such as an LNG.
Can I just, we have, we are aware of it and we have submitted our opposition to that statement that it is a temporary facility.
Perfect, awesome.
Thank you, though.
Two other ones, to Tom's point of moving from one town to the, one side of town to the other. I think there's a slight difference because if you're relocating it, it would have to meet all of the citing criteria that's used at the energy facility siting board. I think that the energy facility siting board really looks after the interests of the community. And I wouldn't really, I think they take all of the economics, the traffic, the impact. It's very thorough and I'm impressed. And that's where I really think that whatever is chosen needs to go through that regulatory body. Lastly, one of the things that's changed after the Newport outage is that the ability, the capacity on how much gas can be taken on a single day has been reduced. And what that does is kind of like that bar that was it Hank showing earlier? The bar that was there was lowered after that event because the transmission companies reduced the amount of capacity you could take. It was, it was something that kind of rippled throughout the gas industry. And the point of that is that what it And the point of that is that what it does is it puts a further constraint on the system, really pushing for peak shaving. Now, these LNG facilities are probably only used, I think the one last year wasn't used at all, but it's really on the coldest days and it's imperative that they have these. From an alternative perspective, as a guy that works in the industry and also as a resident, out of the four solutions, which I don't think the town's going to be going into, getting into, I think the pipeline is probably the lowest option in my thought, primarily because I don't think it'll change. The cost of it is substantial relative to the value added. I don't see any other way other than a peak shaving facility. And that's kind of my thoughts as a resident and a person in the gas industry. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Schrod. And I believe we're going to go back to Tom. Tom, something new?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I was having trouble unmuting.
That's okay.
Um.
Are you dying?
I just want, Mr. Schrod is absolutely correct that it would go through a different type of citing review and so forth. The point I was making is the Chief Ford put together an evacuation plan for the Old Mill site. It's a mile and a quarter around that site under certain circumstances. If that's moved, if the facility is moved, I don't care whether it's had the citing or whatever. If there's a, if there is an earthquake like we had the other day and it breaks a three-inch pipe, that area of a mile and a quarter is going to be evacuated, whether it's on the east side or the west side. If you put in a larger hundred-million-dollar facility, such as National Grid suggested, that's going to be a much larger area. And if you do what they, the next suggestion they did, which was LNG plus hydrogen and we would be the first place in the United States to have one of those, what could go wrong with that? We want, we don't want any of these peak shaving facilities on the island. We have three exits from this island. If you're going to evacuate something, either the facility, there's a, there's a peak shaving facility in Providence. That's where the original gas was supposed to come from back in January of 2019. That facility did not work. That was the reason, that was the first cause. And even then, if that's, if the second valve hadn't been misprogrammed, it still wouldn't have made a difference and Newport would have gotten their gas. It was a, it was a series of things that did it. We do not have a gas supply problem, period. And if you read that Department of Transportation report, you will see that. They modeled it. They said very succinctly, and it was in Mr. Webster's presentation as well, all three of those things had to happen in order to get that shortage. None of those things was a gas shortage, by the way. So, that, I don't want you thinking that a peak shaving spot on the west side here is going to be received very well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Grebe. Okay. So, let's circle back with counselors. With respect to getting our comments documented for National Grid, I, we echo what Mr. Catman was saying earlier regarding items one and two in the letter. If we could pull up the letter, draft letter. And I'm sure it's got, you know, the councils have seen the letter. You know, I think these are, these are something that I think are unanimous on. There's a lot of other information that goes into the different options and I think we'd send mixed messages if we tried to do it any other way. That's just my opinion. I'm very comfortable with items one and two. If anybody would like to add something to it, you know, but we can have that conversation. But we did have a suggestion, Brian wanted to.
I'd be happy to throw on a moratorium as well. I don't think they're going to take that suggestion. I think that's more of a suggestion to go to the PUC. But, you know, a moratorium would slow down the additions and stop or move that line a little bit.
Are you saying for the whole island, Mr. Hamilton?
More for a new gas customer.
It has to be for the whole island. The amount of gas that Portsmouth uses is minuscule compared to what Middletown and Newport use.
Right.
I mean, it's very sporadic.
And since the gas is coming through our town, I think it's appropriate for us to comment on it. So, I think that's, I think that's a good suggestion. I would, I'd include that.
Yeah. I mean, they are talking about a long-term solution. I mean, we should all be aware that temporary to them is 2035, so.
Understood, but putting, requesting a moratorium puts the ball in their court to say, "We got to do something quicker."
Absolutely. So, I, so I think, you know, short of, you know, short of them, this would, this would kickstart it in that direction by getting these comments to them on behalf of the town.
Yeah, let's do it.
And I guess the question would be, should we send this also to the PUC and the Energy Siting Board, not just to National Grid where they put in a drawer?
I would, is that your motion?
Sure.
Second.
So, wait, this is getting confusing. So, the motion is to.
The motion is to present your letter with items one and two and adding item three, which taking your three, four, and five off and adding requesting a moratorium on any new gas services on Equidnic Island.
Right.
I have to say that even though that I don't think we'll get a majority opinion on this next one other suggestion I have, every single environmental group in the country is advocating against increasing infrastructure for gas. And it would absolutely not save our constituents money to have that happen. So, I would like to add an item four, that we also oppose any construction of new gas infrastructure.
I would be opposed to that because that, that leaves it, that leaves it open to a lot of different interpretations of new gas infrastructure. You know, they, you know, they might have to go put new infrastructure and just to replace existing infrastructure because.
I'm sorry. I stand corrected. Then their option four, their option four of having a new pipeline added. That's what I would oppose then specifically.
Well, why don't we do it a different way, Ms. Ujifusa, and request that they, as quickly as possible, look at energy efficiency items that would help lower the demand of gas use on the island, which I forget is that, you know, it's the heat pump model, that they can fund programs to help people get off of natural gas.
Okay, I'm with you.
You guys can wordsmith that, but you get the point.
Okay.
Okay, so.
Put that as option four? So, you got number one and two are there, three is a moratorium and four, accelerate programs to help remove people from natural gas with energy efficiency programs, whether that be weatherization, heat pumps, whatever does it.
All right. I mean, that seems, those seem like a solid four. Any further questions, comments from counselors? So, we had a motion and a second?
Yes.
With demonstrations?
Mr. Kelly, suck it in there.
All right. All in favor?
Ms. Ujifusa?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Catman?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Mr. Agar.
Aye. Motion passes seven to zero. Thank you all. Okay. New business. Business number one.
And a new day coming.
Yes.
If we make it to a new day, I'm going to cry.
Quick, get this over with. I don't want to see Keith cry. I really don't.
I got the tissue pack right here. New business number one. You guys are, you guys are sitting at home. Request approval.
We're well of, we're well aware of that, Mr. President.
Yeah. Request approval of the 2021 transfer station sticker fee. Mr. Woodhead?
Council President, members of the council, I'll keep it short and it won't be a new day before I get done. So, I like to go over the spreadsheet for the 2021 annual sticker costs and I'll just highlight some of the major changes. The first is the annual sticker sales revenues. The biggest change in this section is the amount of the annual projected sticker sales for 2021. This went down because of the 2020 sticker sales were only 2,372. So, that's why that number went down. The next is the general revenue and this is mostly flat except for the paybag sales that went down due to the sticker sales. The next section is the operation costs. The operation for the transfer station and including the second employee that helps out at the transfer station, that went up 2% per Waste Connect's contract. And, but just to want to highlight that the transportation costs did not go up. It was just the operation and the second employee. Also in that section, the Rhode Island Resource Recovery, the tipping fees for the first six months is going to stay the same, but from July 1st to December 31st is going to increase to $50.50 per ton. And the rest of the expenses are pretty much staying the same. So, when we take in the total expenses of the $733,678.28 and then we take out the paybags and the general revenue of the $23,283.12, we get the sum of $483,835.16. Then we divide that by the projected annual sticker sales for 2021 of the 2,375 stickers that we project and we come up with $203.72. But then we also have a deficit of $18,915.11. That number is the difference between the revenue and the total revenue and the total expenditures. And we divided that by the 2,375 and we came up with the $7.20.28. So, we add both of those together and that's what came up with the new sticker fee for 2021 of $211. If anyone has any questions, if not, I can move on to the application.
Just one quick one, Brian. How often are we having that second employee on? And can we limit some of that to control some of the cost?
We already lowered his operations, the number of hours that he's going to be there from last year to this year. So, right now, we're getting a little credit from last year, from this year because he hasn't been there the total amount of time. But I don't think we can lower it much more because it's in the contract as of right now.
We'll at least explore that to see. And also, I've, you know, it's been run very, very well, but I have received a few complaints about the guy's not helping out as much as they used to. So, if you can just review that with him, it'd be helpful, you know?
Absolutely.
When some little young lady shows up with a, you know, a bad knee or something, they should probably help her as much as possible.
And Council, Hamilton, I agree with you 100%. And if someone needs assistance, they should really talk to the security guard, the guard at the gate and they could radio to the person from Waste Connect and help them out because sometimes they don't really know who needs help or who doesn't need help. But absolutely, I'll, I'll bring that back to their attention.
Thank you.
I have a question. What was the, the transfer station sticker fee for this year? I'm sorry if I missed that.
$191.
Yep, $211. $20.
Okay, $20?
Yes.
And Mr. Woodhead, I know this is outside of it, but we're also, are we going to stop again on December 15th on the waste, yard waste because?
Yes, we're going to stop. I think it's December 31st we stop.
Okay, all right, because they're all packed up today. It looked like it was a busy weekend, this weekend, of people cleaning up yards, including me.
Yeah, we stopped December 31st and then we're going to start back up March 15th.
Perhaps we can have Ray put a sign up that says that, starting now?
Sure.
But how does the recycling coordinator directly impact the operations of the transfer station?
I'm a little confused. So, the recycling coordinator is responsible for the operation, well, most of the operations for the transfer station. He coordinates with the security guards, Waste Connect, if there's any issues with Waste Connect. And then he's also promotes recycling.
Also, our representative for RIRAC.
Correct. He's, yeah, he's also the representative for RIRAC.
He also coordinates all the e-waste pickups and all that fun stuff too, right?
Waste, plastic, and, yeah.
But a lot of those programs are town-wide and not just for the transfer station.
Correct.
So, why don't we make him a town employee instead of paying him in the enterprise fund?
It is, the enterprise, if that comes, it's going to come out of a different budget. You're going to increase the budget of the town.
I understand that.
I can't answer that. I mean, he gets paid, whether it's out of the enterprise fund or the town budget. If he gets paid out of the enterprise fund, what you're, essentially what you're suggesting is that we'll take an element in the enterprise fund and we'll put it into the town budget. So, now, even though it's miniscule, in principle, what you're doing is you're asking for the people who don't buy into the Portsmouth transfer station to pay for an element of that transfer station.
No, they're paying for Prudence Island.
Their taxes.
Well, but on the flip side. And they get more use out of him than they get out of Prudence Island, getting their trash pulled off the island.
But on the flip side, when he does an event for e-waste recycling or something hazardous waste, when he coordinates that, then the payers of the sticker fee are subsidizing the other people in town.
That's true, but I, we can go any way the council wants to go. I just want you to go in ice white open. We're in the middle of pandemics. We are going to have some revenue shortcuts this year and every dollar counts. We're looking at a possible school bond. There's a possible discussion coming up on a community center. So, if we take this out of the enterprise and put it into the town general fund, that's $20,000, $25,000. And I know I have this discussion with the council every year. We're very, very careful about never going to the cap. So, if you don't go to the cap, you can only increase the budget by about $1.8 million a year, of which over 66% almost automatically goes to the school side. So, we spend four nights talking about some, you know, very, very small amounts of the budget, which really, we can't affect a whole lot. So, every dollar does count. We can go any way we want, but every, there's not a date. I'm in that time of year. Right now, I'm getting civic support requests almost on a daily basis. And there's a number of you that have come to me and asked me to make sure I get certain things into the budget next year. So, we just have to be very careful.
I would like to just add for, I think this discussion.
For, I, I think this discussion about what might be moved out of the enterprise fund and into the federal budget. Is. Unfortunately, this. Transfer station discussion is always in December. It's, it's out of sync in our annual budget cycle. But this is a discussion that should be had. At next year's budget discussions. So it could be taken out of the enterprise fund if that's the direction the council wants to go. A, a year from now. Uh, but, but for now, I think we're. We can't put something onto an existing budget. We, it needs to stay in the enterprise. Uh, fund structure. Tonight.
And I'll make a motion to set the sticker fee at two hundred and eleven dollars and we can all. Go to bed before midnight maybe.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second to, um, set the 2021, uh, transfer station, station sticker fee at two hundred and eleven dollars. All those in favor?
Ms. Ujifusa?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Catson?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
And Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Mr. Agar.
The, the motion passes six to one. Mr. Woodhead?
Sure, yep, Council President, members of the council, th- this is just for the transfer station rules and regulations. Uh, there's only two changes really that are on here and one is changing the annual sticker cost to two hundred and eleven dollars instead of the one ninety-one. And then also on the second page is, uh, mixed recycling. Uh, it used to be called single stream, but now we just changed it to mixed recycling. We just added a few things that was included in the mixed recycling. That's pretty much all the changes that are on the transfer station sticker application.
Those who approve the, uh, transfer station rules and regulations and application.
Second.
All those in favor?
Ms. Ujifusa?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Catson?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
This, Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Mr. Agar.
Aye. Motion passes seven to zero. Onto future meetings. We have our, our December fourteenth. Our, our regular council meetings are December fourteenth, December twenty-eighth, January eleventh and January twenty-fifth. We would also have a special meeting if, if the election results are certified on. On December seventh. So that has not occurred yet, but, uh, we potentially have a, a, our swearing-in ceremony. On December seventh. So we kind of have that as a placeholder.
Day that will live in infamy.
It, it holds true. Uh, Mr. Catson? Just want to say.
Please, no.
Just want to say thank you. Um, this, this, if this was. Indeed, your, uh, your final council meeting as a city member, we just wanted to thank you for, for all of your efforts. Uh, the council. I know you'll get a chance to, to say something, uh, you know, at, at the December seventh meeting, but just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I appreciate that.
A, a motion to adjourn and wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving.
Seconded on both account, both counts.
All those in favor?
Ms. Ujifusa?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Catson?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Mr. Agar.
Aye. Motion passes seven to zero and it is still Monday.
Kevin, you can keep your Kleenex.
Thank you.
Happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
Yep, take care.
Happy Thanksgiving. Bye-bye.